Good morning. Welcome to the December 14th meeting of the Placer County Board of Supervisors. Looking at our agenda, it looks like we had about two-thirds of all action items throughout the year slide to this last meeting. So hopefully we get started and get moving on this. We're going to begin with a flag salute led by Supervisor Rockholm.
(Inaudible) To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now Anne will lead our statement of meeting procedures.
Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting of Tuesday, December 14th, 2010. Agendas are available on the wall outside this meeting room. If you are here to speak on an issue not appearing on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker. The board is not permitted to take action on items addressed under public comment. When you speak, clearly state your name and address for the record. All items on the agenda will be open for the public to address before final action is taken. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker, which will be monitored by a timer on the podium. If there is a person speaking on behalf of a group with no other testimony from another member of the group, please identify yourself as such and your time may be extended at the pleasure of the board. Keep in mind that the chairman has the discretion of limiting the total discussion time on any item. If you are hearing impaired, we have listening devices available. It is requested that all pagers and cell phones be either turned off or put in the silent mode. Thank you for your participation and cooperation.
Thank you, Anne. So this is the time for public comment. This is the time when any member of the public may address the board on any item that is not on our agenda, knowing that we cannot -- you don't qualify. Knowing that we cannot take action on any item raised under public comment. Good morning, sir. Would you please identify yourself for the record?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Rui Cunha, Program Manager for the Office of Emergency Services. You may have noticed coming in this morning, there's a large fire apparatus parked in front of the domes.
I'd hoped we were finally getting new offices.
There is no emergency. What I did want to do is take this opportunity -- you may recall that your board, a little over a year ago, authorized the purchase of three water tenders to be added to western Placer County. And one of those three is sitting in front of the board as we speak, or in front of the domes as we speak. I want to take this opportunity -- that particular water tender is Water Tender 100 for the Dry Creek Fire Department. And I want to take this opportunity to thank your board for your support and Rocky, you in particular, for your support in supporting Dry Creek, the station expansion that we have going on, as well as the purchase of that water tender. A very significant capability is coming in as a result of that. Joined by Chief Harris and also Steve Spindler's here, one of our longtime volunteer fire captains, who again, on behalf of the volunteers, would like to thank you and your board for your support in that capability. Chief Harris?
Well, I too can only echo the words that Rui just gave over, the water tenders that were purchased by this board and the support that we received in the board for adding these capabilities to western Placer County. The water tender that's outside has two sisters that are sitting out there in the fleet. All of them have the capability of pumping 1,000 gallons a minute. So not only do they act as a tender to the other fire engines, but in the event that a fire engine isn't the first on scene and the water tender is, this apparatus has a capability of initiating an interior attack on a structure fire. So it's a very important capability, particularly in the rural communities that we live in. And I just would like to thank the board for their support, Supervisor Rockholm in particular. The apparatus that's parked outside does come from Dry Creek, so this is the one that protects your community. And there are two more just like it, like I said, that are sitting out there protecting our communities as we speak. So again, thank you. The water tender will be outside for those that are wanting to brave the elements and go out and then take a look at it. I realize it's a little wet out there today. But should you want to take a look at it, we'll have it there for the duration of the meeting, so it'll be there for whoever wants to take a look at it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the board on public comment? Please. All these strange faces.
Yes, it's my pleasure. And we don't have any items on the agenda today.
I'm sorry, ma'am. We need your name for the record.
Oh, excuse me. Barbara Bassana with the Sheriff's Office. Good morning, Chair and Board. It is a pleasure to be here today. We don't have any items on the agenda today, so I wanted to take this time during public comment to introduce my replacement in the Sheriff's Office as Administrative Services Manager. May I present to you Janice Gage.
Good morning.
And then this is actually a second item, if I may. I would like to call Major Ralph Jimenez and Sergeant --
Andrew Scott.
Scott? Oh, excuse me.
We can tell you who he is.
I'm getting riled being up here. But this is a really good thing. I want to commend, thank you, Jennifer, for your donation. But I'm standing here now as Barbara Bassana, the President of Auburn Rotary. We have partnered with the Deputy Sheriff's Association and the Salvation Army to collect coats for kids. And there's been a resounding response from the county and the local community. The collection goes through the end of this month, and we have gotten a lot of adult coats. So if we had kids' coats, we really appreciate that as well. And even though there may be other items that people are donating, if we can limit the bins to mostly the scarves, hats, and coats for kids, that would be great. We have the collection sites are at the -- on Sutter Street, at the Salvation Army, at Sneev Snyder's Chevrolet, at the Sheriff's Office, at 2929 Richardson. I think there was one.
Walker.
Oh, and then Walker's Office apply. So we really appreciate the support from the county, from the board, and just thank you for the resounding response from the community in this time of need. So thank you. And I think Ralph has another presentation to follow.
Thank you, Barbara. As I am Major Ralph Jimenez with the Salvation Army here in Auburn on Sutter Street. Good morning, Board, Chairman, and Supervisors. I wanted to come and just thank the Board of Supervisors for all their good work that they've done over the years. I specifically would like to thank Supervisor Rockholm. I understand that this is your last meeting, but I wanted to thank you for the revenue sharing that you do for the Community Thanksgiving Dinner. And I know that isn't something that you have to give to the Salvation Army here in Auburn, and I thank you for that very much. I want to thank all the rest of the board, including Supervisor Holmes, for the funds that are raised for this community dinner. This year, we served over 1,300 meals, and 350 of those meals went to shut-ins. And we had over 200 volunteers and 1,000 man-hours. And this can't be done without the help of our community and our Board of Supervisors. This truly makes it a community dinner. I also have to thank all participating Placer County employees and the supervisors, all supervisors that are here, for this event that I know of for the past 15 years that they helped raise funds for. The funds that they have raised have been over $80,000 in these years and thousands and thousands of meals. I do not even know, I've only been here a year, so I do not even know how many meals have been served in these past 15 years. But I know it is tremendous work that goes into putting on this community dinner, and we thank you. We understand that you can choose any social service program to help. And this is a fact alone that makes us realize that we are so blessed that we have the Board of Supervisors choosing us. We look forward to your continued support and hope and pray that this partnership may go on for many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Major. Just a couple of quick questions if I may just clarifying. First of all, on the items you're collecting, the coats, hats, and scarves, are you looking for just new or are gently-used items okay as well?
Yes, both.
Okay. And then you mentioned a number of drop-off points. Is there any reason why we couldn't establish one maybe out of our Finance Administration Building at DeWitt, maybe one here and maybe one down at the Justice Center down in Roseville?
The one in Roseville, I think because they're under the other coats.
Overlapping jurisdiction.
Yes, yes.
Well, at least here within, you know, the community where we have, number one, a lot of public traffic in that Finance Administration Building right there by the Recorder's Office. And then making it a little more convenient for our employee workforce to be able to participate if they'd like to as well.
Yes. And they would just have to call our office and talk to Michelle. She is handling the Coats for Families this year.
Okay. Barbara will take the lead on that. Thank you very much, Barbara. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Say something.
Yes.
Barbara was going like this, I guess, assuming they take cash too.
Ah, there you go. Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay. Anybody else wish to -- another strange face.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Not strange as in uncommon, just strange.
No. I don't know. What do you think? Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Good morning, Devin Bell with the Sheriff's Office. Barbara just sort of skipped over. Clearly, we're in transition and we're excited about the future. We're excited about Jan and what a welcome addition to our team. But Barbara just fled. Where did you go, Barbara? Come back up here. I just can't let it go that she is leaving with almost 23 years of county service. And she used a word, she said her replacement. And I've said this before, nobody's going to replace Barbara. Jan will very successfully succeed Barbara. I have no doubt at all, but nobody's going to replace her. And I just wanted to say thank you to Barbara and acknowledge her to the board, and we really appreciate her service for the last 23 years.
Anybody else wish to address the board on a public comment? Okay, I don't think that's -- no. All right, seeing none, we will go ahead and move on to Supervisors Committee Reports. Any members of the board have any item they'd wish to address under Supervisors Committee Reports? Supervisor Holmes?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I see our Chief Probation Officer, Steve Pecor, here today. Would you come up to the lectern, Mr. Pecor? This may be kind of a secret to some people, but Steve let me know last week that he has been chosen as the Association of California Chief Probation Officers' Chief Probation Officer of the Year. And I think that is very -- And I've got a little bio here for you. Steve began in 1982 as an extra --
What's his name?
He's not dead.
No, I think he was looking for who's going to be.
Well, Steve began his career in 1982 as extra-help group counselor and became a permanent county employee on August the 6th of 1983. It was the wisdom of the board in July 8th of 2006 to appoint Chief Pecor as the Chief Probation Officer for Placer County. And it's been quite a successful ride for him. We hope he continues for quite a while. Just so you'll know, the Chief Probation Officers of California Association is composed of 59 officers. Why are there 59 when there are only 58 counties? San Francisco, go figure. And they have to. The organization's mission is to provide leadership in the mobilization, coordination, and implementation of probation programs and provide for public protection, including detention and treatment, victim services, and the prevention of crime and delinquency, and to ensure the provision of quality investigations and supervisions of offenders for the courts. Each year, the organization honors an individual who demonstrates excellent and outstanding leadership in their individual department and who significantly contributes to the organization and to the field of corrections. Since Steve's appointment as Chief Probation Officer, he's served on several of the organization's committees, the Executive Committee and Legislative Review, Juvenile Services Committee, the Department of Juvenile Justice Parole Realignment Committee, that should be a fun one, Federal Funding Committee, By-Law Committee, and currently serves as Regional Chair for the Organization's Sacramento Region. I think this is entirely significant, an award for him. As you, the board, is well aware, last year, his department saved the county over $1.7 million in cost avoidance. So anyhow, I'm honored. We are proud that you are elected. It shines well for your department and also for the county of Placer. So congratulations.
Rebuttal? I'll make this real quick. I'd just like to say thank you, and I extremely appreciate working in Placer County. This county has a great history of teamwork, starting with the Board of Supervisors, the CEO's office, and then working with all the criminal justice partners in this county is just unbelievable through CPAC. I realize that no other county in the state has this type of organization and commitment and level of teamwork that we see here in Placer County. And I think that helps all of our departments and it helps our citizens, and we're all lucky to be here. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. And you know, I see that there's your department's represented, the District Attorney's Office represented here, and the Sheriff's Department, of course, and then the presiding judge, Aldo Panish, is here. So I think it's a testimony of your relationship. Oh, also, I have to recognize Renee Rigatcio Anacarrio from Placer County Office of Education as well. It's a testimony to your relationship with all those involved in juvenile justice and the justice system. So again, congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, just wanted to report briefly that last Friday, I did have the opportunity to meet with Gina Banks from Senator Feinstein's office in San Francisco on the Auburn State Recreation Area funding issue that's facing us as a county, Auburn as a city, and the region more generally. I think there were some very productive conversations about some paths that we, as a county, might want to explore, and they, on the federal side, are going to explore as well. And it actually gives me great hope that we will come up with a long-term funding solution for the Auburn State Recreation Area. But just wanted to let folks know that we're continuing to work on that.
And then, under Committee Reports, if -- we'll pause and let the probation department go back to work.
Now?
The entirety of the probation department. Good thing there's not a county fair going on right now. If Greg or whoever's running our -- there we go, as if by magic. It was alluded to earlier that this is the last meeting of one of our colleagues, Supervisor Rocky Rockholm, representing the first district of Placer County. And we thought it would be appropriate to take a moment, tell you a little bit about what Rocky has managed to accomplish, not just in the four years that he's served as a county supervisor, served as our chairman, but his lifetime of public service. So go ahead and bring up the first slide, I believe, or do I? Ah, here we go. Okay. So a little bit about Rocky. Many of you know his service, not just as a county supervisor, but some of you might have had the great displeasure coming across him when he was a member of the police force in the city of Roseville. I recall I first met Rocky in 1995, when I was a candidate for the state legislature, and Rocky was the president of the Roseville Police Officers Association. They endorsed another guy, but Rocky and I have been able to work together in spite of that. Number of projects that Rocky has had a hand in. Perfect timing. Of course, the Bill Santucci Justice Center, Highway 65 overpass, the Rockland Library, and Interstate 80 improvements. What's notable about these is you see two projects, neither of which are actually in Rocky's district. And it's indicative of the man who understood, though he represented the first district, that we're all county supervisors working together in Placer County for the betterment of all. And our board continues to this day to work very well together on projects of importance county-wide, not just within our own districts. Of course, Rocky was recognized last year as the Golden Empire Council's Distinguished Citizen of the Year. And Rocky has, true to his law enforcement background, a great passion of his has been the interoperable radio network for the Placer County Sheriff's Office, which, of course, was honored in a national law enforcement publication. Rocky, of course, served us well as our MC when we had the opportunity to dedicate the 442nd Memorial at the Santucci Justice Center. Among the more notable projects within his district, Rocky had to take a unique leadership approach. This was an interesting conversation that developed over the course of a number of years, one which actually ironically saw folks within the development community clamoring for fewer units and folks within the environmental community clamoring for more units. And so Rocky was in that topsy-turvy, down-the-rabbit-hole world. Rocky was thrust into the position of having to negotiate those sides, and I think did so very admirably as we moved this project forward. Again, in the vein of working beyond our district boundaries, Rocky has always had a passion for what makes Placer County great, whether it's our employees, the folks that work so hard here, day in and day out, our taxpaying citizens, or our natural resources. And as we have moved forward, understanding that we have an obligation to provide opportunities for housing and for commerce for our citizens, that we also have an obligation to preserve in perpetuity some of those wonderful natural characteristics that make Placer County truly unique. And Rocky has been instrumental in helping us move forward, many of the items that are ingrained within Placer legacy. And of course, he's constantly been a supporter of the Placer County Conservation Plan that we're moving forward, as well as other amenities like the Hidden Falls Regional Park. If you know Rocky, you can't spend too long without learning that he, many of his boyhood years were spent up in the Truckee and North Lake Tahoe area. Rocky has a very strong heart and a passion for the North Lake Tahoe area and has taken a leadership role in a number of areas up there, including when our board had to wrestle with a very divisive issue in regard to the commercial core improvement project. And Rocky is somebody with a personal history up in the Kings Beach area who was very passionate about seeing the area revitalized, acted in a very selfless manner to work with the business owners to try to embrace a commercial core improvement plan option that would actually help to enhance commercial viability up there in the Kings Beach area once again, and just show great leadership in a fairly strong contested environment, shall we say. Rocky's had the opportunity to recognize a number of folks through his coin awards, of course, leadership in Roseville and throughout Placer County, and folks who have given of themselves. And I think that Rocky's nominations are reflective of the priorities that he places in his life. Rocky chose to award people who had shown outstanding contributions to their communities and to their nation, and I think that's reflective of the priorities that Rocky has in his life.
Good morning. It is wonderful to be back at the United States Military Academy, the oldest continuously-occupied military post in America, as we commission the newest officers in the United States Army. Class of 2010, today is your day. A day to celebrate all that you've achieved, in the finest tradition of the soldier's scholarship, and to look forward to the important service that lies ahead. You come from every corner of our country, from privilege and from poverty, from cities and small towns. You worship all of the great religions that enrich the life of our people. You include the vast diversity of race and ethnicity that is fundamental to our nation's strength. There is, however, one thing that sets you apart. Here in these quiet hills, you've come together to prepare for the most difficult test of our time. You signed up knowing your service would send you into harm's way. And you did so long after the first drums of war were sounded. In you, we see the commitment of our country and timeless virtues that have served our nation well. We see your sense of duty, including those who have earned their right shoulder patch, their right shoulder combat patches, like the soldiers who suffered a grenade wound in Iraq, yet still helped his fellow soldiers to evacuate. Your first captain of the Corps of Cadets, Tyler Gordon. We see your sense of honor and your respect for tradition, knowing that you join a long graying line that stretches through the centuries.
That, of course, was President Barack Obama at the commencement at West Point of Rocky's grandson's class, where Rocky's grandson was individually called out by President Obama for his bravery in the face of adversity. And those who know Rocky know that while he has been proud to be a police officer, proud to be called city council member, and proud to be supervisor, there is nothing of which he is more proud than being called great-grandpa, grandpa, father, and husband. And so it is with that that we recognize the service of the last four years of Placer County citizens, Supervisor Rocky Rockholm, and thank him very much for his time served.
Watching some of those clips, especially of my grandson, I was raised by a father that you didn't cry when I was growing up as a kid because it showed weakness. It almost caused me to weep a little bit. My service to the community, to the city of Roseville, to Placer County, and all the things that I've been blessed to be able to do, I owe to my wife and my family. My wife, Dorothy, has been there every step of the way, supported me with the things that I wanted to do, and it's been absolutely an honor to serve all of you to the best of my ability. I've made decisions that I know I've made some people mad, I've made some people happy, but I've always tried to do it in the spirit of what I felt was the right thing to do, not the expedient thing to do or what would help me get re-elected. There's worse tragedies in life than not me being re-elected. I will continue to serve, and my wife and I are going to spend a little time now. We've got our 11th great-grandchild is going to be born soon. We want to reconnect with some of our family members we don't see a lot of, but spend more time with our grandkids. But this board, the staff that I've worked with, it was an absolute honor. I felt that we were equal in every respect, and what you did for me, I tried to do in return and always be courteous, show respect, and not demean anybody, because your job is probably more important than any of us setting up here in the reality of things. When you have an excellent staff, when you read a report, when you can have confidence in that staff, it's pretty easy to know where you're going to land unless something really glowing stands out. And I've always tried to support our staff, both here and at the city of Roseville, that it has been an honor. And to be a part of this community, my law enforcement career, I loved it. I would have continued to do it if my knees hadn't given out of me, but it's been an absolute honor, and thank you for recognizing that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I really want to take this opportunity to say thank you to Rocky, who, when I was running for election, had the great courtesy to meet with me and explain what it is that supervisors do, and I think more importantly, what it is they don't do. Rocky, as Chairman Uller alluded to, is a huge supporter of North Lake Tahoe. He was absolutely instrumental in helping the revitalization at Kings Beach move forward and also in a lot of other projects in the North Lake Tahoe and also in a lot of other projects in the North Lake Tahoe area. And I had probably a dozen different people contact me over the weekend and say, "Make sure to let Rocky know that we love him, we appreciate all he did for the area, we will miss him. You are a wonderful advocate for the lake and for that community," and it did not go unnoticed, and we all appreciate it, and we will miss your voice for that community. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Supervisor Holmes.
Rocky, I don't have to tell you, where yours goes pretty fast, but when you look at the accomplishments that the board has made with your support and with your leadership, it's astounding. I have always considered you a solid friend. I've always understood that you always did your research to do anything. You took some courageous steps early on, which I greatly appreciate when I was the chairman. And I just want to thank you for your service. I know you're not going to leave the scene, you'll probably be involved in some other things, but it's been a pleasure working with you, and I do consider you a friend. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Supervisor Wagan.
Rocky, I'm not sure how long we've known each other. Rocky used to live in Lincoln, but the very first day I walked precincts campaigning, I knocked on Rocky's door, and it was apparent that he was a tough guy. At first I thought he might want to kick my rear end, but we had a nice dialogue, and he was very engaged in the community, knew what was going on. It's been a real privilege working with you, not only as a colleague on the Board of Supervisors, but when you were a council member in Roseville. I've told several people that you perfectly fit your name. You are as solid as rock. You study issues, you follow your instincts, you don't listen to all of the demonizing that occurs in this business too excessively. You don't listen to it at all, and it is too excessive is what I'm trying to say. And you've made some incredible personal sacrifices to do the right thing, but always with courage and integrity, and it's been a great honor to sit next to you and serve with you, and I look forward to continuing to do that.
Thank you.
And I would just say, I recall when you were sworn in, one of your primary objectives was to serve in the vein of your predecessor, Bill Santucci. And I am confident that if Bill were here with us today, he would say, "Rocky, job well done."
Thank you.
With that, we have the opportunity now to move on to the consent agenda. I understand there may be somebody who would like to address item 33B, is that correct? The, in regard to Dry Creek, am I seeing anybody? No. Okay. Then seeing nobody, is there anybody who wishes to address any other item on the consent report, have it removed for discussion before the board takes action? Seeing none, any members of the Board of Supervisors want to remove anything for discussion, or may we have a motion?
Move approval.
Motion, Rocky, second, Holmes to approve consent. Roll call, please.
Rockholm?
Yes.
Wagan?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Hi. Thank you very much. Okay, 9:05, right on time. We have our opportunity to present two employees who have been asked to come here today, and the two of them together represent 55 years of service to Placer County, and so Nancy's going to handle this one for us.
Yes, good morning. Nancy Nittler, Personnel Director. It was my distinct pleasure last month to present the service awards for our employees with your guidance for over 2,000 years, but we thought it was a little short, like 55 years short perhaps, and I got to say, deep apologies, we missed two individuals who were here that day cheerfully supporting their colleagues and their coworkers in receiving their service awards. So it's only fitting, before the end of the year this year, that I ask you, Chairman Euler, if you would join me in presenting the first award for 20 years of service to Scott Owens. Yeah. Guilty party this time. The second award is for 35 years of service, Jane Goulding from the Auditor Controller's Office. Thank you very much, Jane. And as always, for those who've come to support these two individuals in getting their awards, we will have refreshments in the hallway outside the door. Thank you very much.
Okay, we do have a couple of moments before our 9:10 timed items, so why don't we jump real quick? Let's see, who can we get in here and do justice? Linda is not here, but I believe Teresa is going to present item 13B. Teresa, you ready? Why don't we go ahead and take item 13B?
I'm sorry? 12B.
12B. I'm sorry, it's written as 13 on this. You're right, 12B, thank you. Item 12B under County Executive Office is the refunding of 1998 Juvenile Detention Center Jail Kitchen Certificates of Participation.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Teresa Leonard with the County Executive Office. I'm joined today with Kathy Domineco, who is with Capital Public Finance Group, an agency that assisted us with this refunding. We're here today to talk to you about refunding the certificates of participation, also referred to as COPs, for the Juvenile Detention Center and the Jail Kitchen. Essentially, back in 1998, we issued the original COP for $13.2 million. The interest rate on that financing is about 5%. Today, we're looking at refunding that certificate for the same term that's left on the balance of the certificate's maturity at 2025. However, we have a opportunity to refund it at 3.41%. That will save the county about $1,001,000 over the term of the certificate net expenses to actually issue the certificate refunding. So this is very good news. The refunding will be in the amount of $8.9 million. Anything else that you can think of?
Really, the county took advantage of a significant dip in interest rates. Since the time the county locked in this tentative rate pending Board of Supervisors approval, interest rates have actually increased by 70 basis points. That translates to almost $400,000 of additional savings that the county achieved by locking in the rates at that time. So that's also an impressive number. Kathy Domineco, D-O-M-I-N-I-C-O.
Any board members have any questions or staff on this item? Okay, Supervisor Rockholm?
Just going to say, that's what I was talking about when I said staff does their job and look out for the constituents of this county, and I appreciate that.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Move approval.
Motion, Rockholm, second, Holmes, in order to approve item 12B, refunding of the 1998 Juvenile Detention Center Jail Kitchen Certificates of Participation. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, thank you. And we have an associated item for which we will need to adjourn as Placer County Board of Supervisors and convene as Placer County Public Finance Authority on essentially the same item. Any additional staff comments on this item?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. We do need to take action as Placer County Public Finance Authority. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion, Rockholm, second, by Wagan at that time. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, and that allows us to adjourn as Placer County Public Finance Authority and reconvene as Placer County Board of Supervisors. Thank you very much, in order to take up our 9:10 timed item. Our 9:10 timed item is our annual commemorative coin presentation. Back in December of 2002, the Placer County Board of Supervisors created this program in order to recognize community members for acts of heroism, longstanding community service, and exceptional acts that have dramatically improved or impacted people's lives. Each county supervisor is given the opportunity to award a coin recipient that meets one of the following criteria. Offered contribution of longstanding service to Placer County or to a resident thereof; sacrificed a combination of time and talent to Placer County or a resident thereof; went beyond the call of duty to save a life; voluntarily performed an act of heroism that was not paid for; participated in a rarely told or reported feat, dramatically improved and/or impacted a life. This morning, we have six presentations to make, and we will begin with District One Supervisor Rocky Rockholm.
Thank you.
Martha Riley, would you come to the podium, please?
It's my great honor to recognize this woman who is, she's the epitome of Roseville, in my opinion. Martha has been a Roseville resident for 44 years. She's a mother of five children. She is a retired research specialist from the Debt and Investment Advisory Commission of the State of California. She is a member of the Roseville, she was a member of the Roseville City Council in 1982, and has held many other commissions and board positions, such as the American Association of University Women in Roseville since 1967, charter member, various committee chairs, Roseville Urban Forest Foundation since 1995, charter member and former president, Friends of the Roseville Library since 1973, and I would just like to remark that we dedicated the library in Rockland yesterday, and the Friends of the Rockland Library were very instrumental in getting that done. Martha was very instrumental in getting the Roseville Exploration and Research Center in Roseville done, which ultimately ended up in the naming of the library there, the Martha Riley Library. She's a charter member and various committee chairs, board chairman, and president, 2003 to 2007, board member 2000 to current. Roseville Grants Advisory Commission, appointed 2001 to 2009, current member of the Placer County District One Library Advisory Board since 2007. In honor of Martha's dedication and work for the Roseville Libraries in January 2007, Roseville named its third library, the Martha Riley Community Library. Martha firmly believes that the area is provided for the necessities of work, play, school, and business that are essential to a vibrant community. She has volunteered and served in the institutions that have benefited the entire community as well as her family. For these and so many other reasons today, I honor Martha Riley with a Placer County commemorative coin for her continuous service to the community of Roseville and Placer County.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome to say something, if you'd like to, you don't have to, but...
Well, the honor is for heroes, and I certainly don't feel like a hero, because most of the things that I've done have actually benefited me more than the community, and it's always a pleasure to have the opportunity to work and play in a community that accepts you and allows you to grow and fly. Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Also should have said, Martha is also a friend, she's become a friend of mine. Rick Edgar, would you please come to the podium?
Captain Rick Edgar is somebody that I look up to and admire for the way he has served the citizens of Roseville, both as a firefighter and also as a community leader in helping charities and those types of things where need is done, you'll find Rick Edgar. He's currently a captain for the Roseville Fire Department. He is a 45-year lifelong resident of Roseville. He has been a 25-year employee of the city of Roseville. Rick is president of the Roseville Firefighters for the past 15 years. He has been the chairman of the Roseville Firefighters Charities for 18 years. They have raised and donated over $550,000 during his tenure. Rick is a founding member of the Roseville Firefighters Golf Tournament. They have raised over $80,000 for the Outstanding Teachers Award Program. He is also the founding member of the Roseville Firefighters Santa's Els. They have donated to distributed gifts to residents at nursing homes. He has volunteered for numerous other charitable causes and events over the years. He's been a youth sports coach for 20 years. He is also a founding member of the Roseville Heat Girls Softball Program. He has assisted sending over 150 girls to college on athletic scholarships. For these and so many other reasons today, I honor Rick Edgar with the Placer County Coin for his continuous service to the community of Roseville and Placer County. And just to add that it's been my honor, when I was a police officer, to actually work with Rick on the street, and Roseville firefighters and police officers work very close together, I hope they still do, but we were able to accomplish many good things, but I want to honor Rick today for that. Thank you.
Say something if you'd like to. I don't have to.
No, I'd love to. First of all, thank you very much, Rocky, and congratulations for your great career. I've known Rocky from the days I was a youth growing up in Roseville and him pulling me over in his police car, but we go way back. But most importantly, I need to thank my wife, my lovely daughters, and my parents who are here as well, if they could stand briefly. As a firefighter and involved in all the charities that I do, they're the ones that make the ultimate sacrifice and allow me to do the things that I do for Placer County. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chris Knutson, please come to the podium. Chris and I have known each other for a while. He's an educator, principal of Sheridan School, so he's going to be surprised to learn that I can actually read a little bit. We weave my way through this, Chris, and you can critique me. Sheridan, of course, once was a very vibrant community during the Gold Rush era, was when it was founded, but it's been challenged more lately, being farther away from the growth and having infrastructure problems. Critical and essential to that community is the Sheridan Elementary School, of which Chris is the principal. He's well-known both in Sheridan and Lincoln communities as a person that had dedicated himself to the public good. His specific focus is on the Sheridan School, but in general, he also works tirelessly to enhance the entire Sheridan community and to support charitable works in the greater Lincoln community. When you need help in a project to benefit the children of Sheridan, Chris is the person you want to talk to. His personality and the goals of the Western Placer Unified School District are for his students. He works to challenge all students at the Sheridan School while providing support for their various needs. He has created a safe, caring environment for these kids, some who are coming from homes that are dysfunctional and economically distressed. The Sheridan School, under his tenure, epitomizes the goal of a facility with excellent function, use of space, cleanliness, and attractiveness. Chris is constantly aware of his responsibilities to provide for the health and nutrition of the students at the best of his ability to enable their readiness for learning. Chris has done this in a variety of ways. The most important is leadership that gives, to inspire those that work around him so that they all achieve their best. Significant contribution is the funding that he has secured for the Sheridan School over and above what is normally provided by Western Placer Unified School District. He has obtained over $500,000 in grants for the school. He's an excellent administrator that brings out the desire and all to work harder and achieve their best. He has developed many programs and started issues that foster such caring as Santa Singa Along Intervention Programs, Free Family Portrait Evenings at all student families, Community Workdays at the Sheridan School, mentoring and promoting applications for scholarship among the Sheridan students. His great accomplishment actually, though, is his ability just to get things done in the community. Chris is very shrewd and clever and thoughtful, and literally, some of the things that we have worked on together, I probably shouldn't even begin to tell you how we've gratitized...
He's not on the force anymore. And I'm not exaggerating.
So keep in mind the community of Sheridan and the importance of that elementary school. It is a center to that community, and it's essential not only that it stays there, but it thrives, and there is nothing that Chris hasn't thought of or has put together to try to enhance that. Obviously, the things I've described are within his job description... Obviously, the things I've described are within his job description, but I think the emphasis that I want to make is that he is getting this award today because his performance at that level goes far beyond anything that would be on the charts. So, thank you, Chris.
First of all, the first couple of recipients, I wasn't sure that I belonged here. Those were, those were very kind words, Robert, and I value your friendship immensely. The things that we've accomplished in Sheridan are very, very important to myself and my family. That's a, that little town has been ignored for a long time, and when, when we came in, we saw it, and we said, you know, I think we can do some stuff here. And we, my wife and I value relationships immensely, and it's amazing what you can do with relationships. The Board of Supervisors has been one of those relationships that we've, that we've built and cherished, and because of the relationship that we have with the county, the town of Sheridan is starting to prosper. And I think you guys get a lot of the credit for what's about to happen there, and I, I just, it's so cool to see what's happening. It really is. With the, with the bypass coming in, I, I call it the perfect storm, what's happening, and we've, all of our efforts are just coming to, coming to a head, and I think it's really, really a cool deal. I can't, I can't turn around without thanking my wife. The, the things that I do are over and above what is required of me in my job, and it takes a lot of time away from home, and she understands, and that's pretty cool. Thank you very much.
Yes, I'd like to ask Linda Durham to step up to the lectern, please. I, I consider Linda a longtime friend, as her family, her brother Dennis, a Placer High School classmate of mine and a Placer High School graduate, and then, of course, her mother Bernice, who is a very dear friend of mine and who I appreciate very much. Linda has recently retired from the Placer County Office of Education after a thirty-four year career serving, dedicated to serving the needs of Placer County's at-risk kids. These are the foster youth, the young people expelled from their schools, and the young people that have ended up in juvenile court. Through the Placer County Office of Education, Alternative Education Program, Linda has worked with students who needed career guidance, assistance in academic and social areas. She worked tirelessly to support them in obtaining successful living skills, finding career training and resources that would give them a positive foundation for the rest of their lives. Linda approached each case with a caring and can-do attitude, working with each student individually, and with their families, and with foster families, and with group homes, to give young people every opportunity to succeed. Placer County Judges and Commissioners, the Placer County Probation Department, the Children's System of Care always trusted Linda and depended on her to help these kids get on the right path and stay out of the juvenile justice system. Now, in retirement, she continues her service to at-risk youth by becoming a member of the Placer County Court Appointed Special Advocates, a national organization that recruits volunteers to represent the best interests of abused and neglected children in the courtroom and in other legal settings, and I couldn't think of anyone more appropriate to do that. The chairman mentioned the criteria for earning this award, and actually, she qualifies on all six categories, and she certainly qualifies as an unsung hero to countless of young people throughout Placer County, and I'm honored to present her with this coin.
Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to thank the Board of Supervisors and especially Jim for this honor, and I need to recognize my ninety-three-year-old mother, who started us as very young children believing that it's better to give than to receive, and brought us into community service at a very young age in trying to make a difference in the lives of others in Placer County. And so, I would like for her to be recognized. She can't stand right now. She recently had a stroke, and, but she's a real blessing to all of us. I'd also like to thank my family, who have been so supportive of me through the years and just have empowered me to believe that there's nothing that's impossible, just keep pushing forward. And so, I'd like to honor all of them, some of who are here today, and I'd love to thank the students that I've worked with. They've blessed my life more than I think I've been able to bless theirs. They, we need to believe that kids can change. We've got to remove labels and allow students to start over, and sometimes I needed to let them start over twelve times a day, you know, in order for our days not to go in the toilet. And so, when you meet a young person that's struggling, please reach out a hand or give them a shoulder. It will go a long ways in their lives if you could walk in their shoes for a day. You would wonder why they even want to keep moving forward sometimes. So, again, I thank you for the honor today, and it is greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Well, those are really inspiring words, and I, I feel like we just had this perfect confluence of events because the next recipient of the coin award is Terrell, excuse me, Taylor Carol Lynn Starks, age ten, who is a student at Auburn Elementary School. She's in the fifth grade. Taylor, did you want to come forward? And you can come forward to any of the members of your family you'd like, or you can come forward on your own. She's on her own. Excellent. Taylor is joined today by her mother, Mary Ann Vinson, her dad, Dean Starks, and her Nana, Carol Vinson of Forest Hill. You may have read about Taylor. A few weeks ago, in the Auburn Journal, Taylor was up in Forest Hill visiting her grandmother when her grandmother started to have some neck back and chest pains, and Taylor, who apparently pays attention in school, recognized these as potentially the sign of a heart attack. And despite her Nana's protests, she insisted on calling 911, and it was a very fortunate thing that she did because indeed, her grandmother was having a heart attack, and Taylor, quite frankly, probably saved her life. So, she really is a heroine. So, let me tell you a little bit about her, because aside from being a heroine who pays attention in school, she is on the principal's honor roll. She has straight A's. She was on the honor roll twice last year. She's playing trombone. Her interests are reading, art, music, singing, and playing with pets, her pets. And on that note, she and her mother have started a rabbitry, which it sounds like exactly what it is. They're, they're raising rabbits, and Taylor, interestingly, is raising two breeds of rabbits which are on the top ten endangered list, beverns and american sables, and she's working diligently to bring these animals back from the edge of extinction, and I think that shows an incredibly kind heart and an eye to the future. Her mother describes her, and I love this description, as "very smart, strong-willed", which she clearly was to ignore her Nana and call 911, "kind-hearted, social, honest, fair, and with a total grasp on what is right and wrong." I can't think of a nicer set of words for anyone to say. I wish someone would say that about me. The other thing that I thought was absolutely telling when I met with her mother and when we communicated a little bit by email is that her mother said, "There is nothing Taylor can say that will make me not love her, and I will always try everything in my power to help her." And I think that's very powerful. It's a very powerful message from her family. Clearly, her sense of what is right and wrong, she learned both from her family and from her school. And I'm just so honored today to be able to give you this coin award, because I expect to see you back here in thirty years, receiving another one of these with a long list of many of these same sorts of achievements that other folks have, have had today, but you really are a heroine, and I really want to thank you and say, "Great job, and yay, Nana. I'm so glad you're here to join us." I would like to tell you all that my Nana is very special and close to me. What happened was scary to me, but I called 911 to save her. I was not just going to sit there and cry, I was going to save her. I saw something very scary and heartbreaking. She passed out on the couch, but luckily, the paramedics were there. She has already had two heart attacks, but she has never passed out. We thought she had gone to heaven. We went to the garage and cried and cried. My mom went and saw Nana on the floor purple. She had to be shocked. She had to be taken on the gurney and taking, and taken to Southern Faith Hospital. It was raining that day, so the, so they cannot drive very fast. When we were driving, they stopped. Nana was alive, but when they stopped, we thought she was sick. We thought she had passed, but she was sick. I'm thankful that she is alive. I love her very, very much. Thank you.
I'd like to invite to the podium Tom and Patty Schumacher, please, and if Kyle would like to join you, or... I didn't know Victor Dew. I had the opportunity to meet with Tom and Patty in their living room, had the opportunity to talk with Chris Carvallo, I'm sorry, Victor's best friend, and to Courtney Gold, his fiancee, and this is what I learned. Quiet confidence, a sense of purpose, and a giving heart. Characteristics each of us would like ascribed to ourselves. Characteristics that Private First Class Victor Dew had in abundance. As a young boy or two, he startled his mother Patty when she awoke one morning and found him missing from his bed. A brief search ended in front of the television, where young Victor sat enjoying cartoons while eating Cheerios, which he had retrieved from the pantry. Another surprise was delivered when, at age two and a half, his mother discovered he had potty-trained himself. When Victor was four and a half, Patty would meet Tom Schumacher. Married a year and a half later, Tom would be the man Victor knew as his father. Victor began studying karate at age six and excelled. He would go on to changes, studied Jiu-Jitsu, in which he achieved his second-degree black belt. His parents and friends describe him as a silent leader, one who led by example of caring deeply for those around him and a giving, selfless demeanor. His best friend, Chris Carvallo, described Victor as the most humble and unselfish person he's ever known, saying Victor never spoke of his own accomplishments, but instead focused on ways to make others happy. Victor's fiancee, Courtney Gold, whom he met through mutual friends when they were in their early teens, paints a picture of a strong, steady, caring young man who loved to make her smile, which he would frequently do by belting out Backstreet Boys songs in a strained falsetto voice. Courtney says Victor's passion and caring were displayed in abundance, as he lived each day like it was his last. It came as no surprise to anyone who knew Victor when he announced that he was going to enlist in the Marines, something he'd spoken of since the age of twelve, when he had covered his bed with a flag of the United States Marine Corps. At his parents urging, he didn't enlist right out of high school, but rather registered at Sierra College. It was at Sierra that he was reacquainted with Courtney. During his second semester, in February of two thousand nine, he decided that he knew what his calling was, and he enlisted in the United States Marine Corps. He tested well enough that he was offered a presidential security post, but it was Victor's heart's desire to be on the front lines. He told his parents, "I don't want to be opening doors." And with that, he was trained as an anti-armor missileman and deployed on September twenty-fifth, two thousand ten, for Afghanistan. On the night of October thirteenth, Private First Class Victor Adu, Corporal Justin J. Kane, Lance Corporal Joseph E. Roadwald, and Lance Corporal Philip D. Vinnage were conducting combat operations in Hemun Province, Afghanistan, when their vehicle was struck by improvised explosive device. In an instant, all four souls were lost. It is my great honor to posthumously award this commemorative coin to Private First Class Victor Dew for his service to others before self, before his sacrifice for us and for our country.
You don't need to say anything if you don't want to.
I know, I know. We just don't want anyone to forget that this is all about, it's been a long war, and a lot of people have truly forgotten why we're there, and there's a lot of families that have lost a loved one, and we don't want them forgotten either. We need to stick to this fight, we need to get it done, we need to finish what we started, and we need to bring our children home. Thank you.
That concludes the presentation of our commemorative coins for two thousand and ten. There is a reception that will be held out in, I believe, in the main lobby area for recipients and families to celebrate and share stories and get to know each other. So, we thank you very much for being here this morning, your participation, and we thank you all for your, your commitment to Placer County and our nation. thank you all for your commitment to Placer County and our nation as a whole. Thank you so much for being here. And we will pause for a moment and let families and friends go ahead on out to that reception and enjoy yourselves. As a matter of fact, we'll take about a five-minute recess real quick. So... Thank you. Thank you. [inaudible] There is a reception that will be held out in, I believe, in the main lobby area for recipients and families to celebrate and share stories and get to know each other. So we thank you very much for being here this morning, your participation, and we thank you all for your commitment to Placer County and our nation as a whole. Thank you so much for being here. And we will pause for a moment and let families and friends go ahead on out to that reception As a matter of fact, we'll take about a five-minute recess real quick. Timed item and ask our district attorney, Mr. Brad Finocchio, to please approach the I get to. Brad, it is this board's great pleasure to thank you for your years of service as an attorney, as a deputy district attorney, and as our presiding district attorney for the past 16 years in Placer County. And we have a lot of whereas's and therefor's and all those fun things, so we'll just go ahead and launch into these to give people the full flavor of who is Bradford R. Finocchio. Brad graduated from Lincoln University School of Law in 1977, was in private practice from '78 to '85. He was hired in Placer County on November 12th of 1985 as a deputy district attorney, was elected to district attorney in '94, '98, 2002, 2006, with his retirement to commence on New Year's Eve of this year. During Brad's 25 years, he successfully prosecuted every type of crime, from misdemeanors to special circumstance and multiple victim death penalty murder cases. Under Brad's leadership, a family protection unit, an elder abuse unit, and a DUI unit were created to prosecute those specialized cases. Brad has constantly, in and out of the office, been a source of good humor, endless encouragement and motivation for the district attorney's office staff who have served under him. And under Brad's leadership, he has brought statewide recognition to the Placer County District Attorney's Office, including the California District Attorneys Association Prosecutor of the Year Award to four county district attorneys during the last six years, and the District Attorney Investigator of the Year Award in 2008, as well as the Attorney General's Award for distinguished service in elder abuse prosecution. Under Brad's leadership, Placer County District Attorney's Office DUI Unit achieved the highest DUI conviction rate in the state of California. Brad has led the district attorney's office by setting an example of unsurpassed professionalism, integrity, and effectiveness in his prosecution of criminals who break the law and in pursuit of justice on behalf of the victims of crime. Brad has earned the highest respect of the bench, the bar, the law enforcement agencies, and the deputy district attorneys who serve under him. And the Placer County Deputy District Attorneys have been proud to serve under him, and the citizens of Placer County have been fortunate to have them as his district attorney. As a result of the above-mentioned achievements, Placer County is recognized by the criminals as being a very bad place to break the law. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors, the County of Placer, on behalf of the citizens of Placer County, acknowledge with great appreciation Bradford R. Finocchio's exceptional service and do wish him very well in his retirement and future plans.
I must say, I know no pleasanter fact than that I've had the privilege, every day for the last 25 years, to work for the people of Placer County. As the end of the road draws increasingly near, I find that I'm in a very happy state of mind. And now, from the vantage point of reflecting on things past, I fail to recall truly one melancholy hour, though surely there were many mixed in here and there somehow in the amount of time that has added up to the last quarter century. In the time that I've had here, I've had the real privilege of working with people whom I admire and whom I respect. It's a matter of immense gratification to me to find that my contribution has somehow helped to create successful outcomes. I consider myself fortunate. I'm surrounded by talented, dedicated, courageous people, and I'm proud of each and every one of them. It's with them in mind that I feel no small measure of regret as I prepare to say goodbye. Please accept my gratitude for this resolution, and I accept it with heartfelt thanks and praise for the entire staff of the district attorney's office, both past and present. Because in reality, it's they who've made this moment possible and who have made my career possible. Permit me to publicly thank them, all of them, and I offer you my thanks as well. Thank you.
Before you get too far, I know that there are a few members of the board that want to comment on your service, and so in self-defense, you might want to resume your... You might want to resume your position here at the podium. Uh... Yeah, Supervisor Rockland, please.
Brad, it's... I know what the feeling is like. I think I'm feeling some of the same things, although you had a longer tenure at what you're doing. You did an outstanding job. You brought credibility to the district attorney's office. I started early in 1979. I remember some of the follies that we had during those years. But the prosecutions and the attorneys that you surrounded yourself with made all the difference in the world for Placer County, especially for law enforcement. If you go out there and make the arrests, you want to make sure you can prosecute it, and your folks did that, and we enjoy it. But I also had the distinction, I actually did cases with you early in life when you were a prosecutor. And you are an outstanding individual. I wish you all the best in whatever your endeavors may be, and you'll probably never have as much fun as you had here, but it's a new stage, it's a new step in life.
You're probably right. Thank you very much, Supervisor Rockland.
Supervisor Wagon.
Brad, as I recall, you and I were elected the same year the first time.
Yep. We were indeed. That was when our hair was much darker.
And more of it.
And a few other things probably, too.
Speak for yourself.
And now, I actually don't know what to say.
Congratulations, Brad. That's a first.
This is supposed to be by you, not me. Thanks for all your years of service, first. I think, I'm sitting here thinking that it's kind of a shame that the public doesn't understand more and appreciate more the work that you did, and it's so often the case, while you were here, but you get more of that acknowledgement, you know, upon retirement. Nothing is more critical for local government than public safety. Your role in that countywide, of course, is critical. If we could, you would probably get more credit for a lot of things that did not happen that would have been bad in Placer County as compared to all of the good things that have happened. But clearly, what Kirk articulated in the resolution reflects on a credible career, and you're always great to work with. Whenever you had an issue that related to the board, you would always call, but you never overstayed your welcome. You were straightforward, and I appreciate all of that. Actually, it was great for us moving forward together under good times and more challenging times. So congratulations. Expect to keep hearing from you. Enjoy your retirement. Thanks.
Thank you, Supervisor Wagon.
Supervisor Holmes.
Brad, I got to know you in a past life, actually, as working on your car. I know that you've been under a lot of pressure, but believe me, working on the district attorney's car is a lot of... It's a lot of make sure I didn't do something wrong. But what I've always appreciated about you, with all the successes that you've had over your career, you've always shared the success with the people that actually did the work. And that was a testament, because we saw them come every year with the awards that you presented to them for their service, your Prosecutor of the Year Awards. So all the work that was done under your leadership, you shared that and made sure that the people that did the work were honored. And I've always admired that and appreciate that, and I wish you well in your retirement.
Thank you, Supervisor Holmes.
Supervisor Montgomery.
Brad, I just want to be very brief, because we really didn't have much of an opportunity to work together, which is actually probably a good thing. I did not know you in any form or incarnation, which is definitely a good thing. But I just wanted to let you know that your staff speak very highly of you, and they think you've done an excellent job. They think you've been a great leader. They're going to miss you. And to me, that's a great legacy for you to take away, the fact that you have the respect, the love, and the friendship of many of your staff. And I just think, I really wanted to let you know that they speak very highly of you behind your back. Thank you for your service.
I consider myself very fortunate for that. Thank you, Supervisor Montgomery.
You know, Brad, we first got to know each other, as Robert alluded, when you ran for the district attorney's office in 1994. And I'll never forget sitting down together with you for the first time at Denny's in Rockland when you were running and you were seeking an endorsement. And you were running, of course, against the incumbent district attorney at the time, and I had offered him my endorsement. And not only did you understand that I had offered an endorsement to him because of how he had... he represented his office, not necessarily having to do with the management of the office within, but his representation of the board, not only did you understand that, but you, immediately upon election, set about seeking to settle the divide that had been created within your office. And whereas, unfortunately, some people who get elected come in, maybe looking to settle scores after a divisive election, and that one was. You came in with a tone that set the tone for your 16 years. And over the 16 years that you've served as our district attorney, what I've seen out of you is a willingness to embrace the people around you who are looking for an opportunity to succeed, empower them with the tools, the education, whatever they need in order to be successful, and then you step out of their way and let them work. And time and time again, they have rewarded you with outstanding results. Placer County has a well-deserved reputation as being a bad place to get arrested, and it's because of the people that you've surrounded yourself with and you being a big enough man to allow other people to grow big in your presence. So, thank you for the legacy that you are leaving for incoming district attorney, and I assure you, he has a much easier transition on his hands than you had on yours. Thank you very much, and in anticipation of what I suspect your future retirement plans might hold, vaya con Dios.
Yes, yes. Much as fast as. Thank you, Jim, and you, I don't know what to say. I have been blessed, and I'm extremely fortunate, to work with people who know how to do a job and who do a job well. And yes, I do get out of their way, because I trust them to do the right thing, and I've never been disappointed. And I certainly know that into the future, they will continue to do that under the leadership of Scott Owens, and I wish he and all of them well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next presentation is Mr. Parker. After 35 years in library services, I've asked Supervisor Holmes to make this presentation.
Mark, please understand they're clapping not because you're leaving.
Could be.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's indeed an honor for me to present this resolution. In a manner of a resolution congratulating Mark Parker, Director of Library Services, on his retirement from Placer County and his career of nearly 36 years in library services throughout California. And I just wanted you to know, and I think I mentioned this to you, I had occasion to talk to Kevin Starr, the Supreme California Librarian, and he had such high regard for you, and let me know how blessed we were to have you here, and I think that's reflected by all the people here that are showed up for you. Whereas, Mark Parker will retire from Placer County after serving from July 18, 2005 to December 30, 2010, as Director of Library Services. And whereas, during Mark's career in library services, he has worked as a librarian at Fresno County Library, Mountain Valley Library System, Sacramento Public Library, the California State Library, and the Placer County Library. And whereas, his career spans a period of massive change in the way libraries operate and society's ability to access information through the growth of technology, and whereas, through his natural gifts, as a mentor, professional, and innovator, Mark has connected people with technology while sustaining traditional values for the need to provide continued library services in our communities. And whereas, in addition to serving for the last five years as Director of Library Services for Placer County, Mark has held the prestigious positions in California as Library Development Services Bureau Chief for the California State Library and the Deputy Director for the Sacramento Public Library. And whereas, despite times of economic hardship, Mark has been able to expand, renovate, and build new library facilities in Placer County, we just dedicated one yesterday, including expanding the Loomis Library, thank you for that, in 2005, expanding the Forest Hill Library in 2009, expanding and renovating the Colfax Library in 2009, and planning the opening of the new Rockland Library slated for January 2011. And please forgive me, but I think that speaks volumes about your service.
Tony said I can pick you up.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Placer, on behalf of the citizens of Placer County, acknowledge with great appreciation Mark Parker's exceptional service, and wish him well in his retirement and future pursuits. Congratulations.
Thank you.
No, it's been, I didn't really bring notes over today, because there's really just one thing to say, and that's thank you. Thank you to the board for your confidence in me. I'm a board appointee, and I do remember very well the day I showed up for the board to appoint me, five and a half years ago, and it has been just really the culmination of my career. I learned a lot of things along the way, all of which I think I brought to this job. And I think we've had a pretty good run of success, and there's no reason to think that it's over yet. I'm sure the library will continue to prosper down the road. I do want to thank my family, including my daughter Annie, who's here today, our avid reader, and all the other avid readers who have made up the Friends of the Library and who make up this community, which is a great library community to work for. And of course, I do want to thank the Friends, the various Friends of the Library groups, many of whom, who's representing a Friends group today? And, thank you, and our Library Advisory Board. There's not many county departments that have 11 Friends groups. And I think that reflects the close bond that we have between the library and the community we serve. And it all kind of keeps things working well, keeps things moving ahead. I do want to also acknowledge the staff. Every day, every day, they're the people who are, you know, on the front lines, doing the work that keeps this library running and keeps, hopefully, the faith and trust of the community that we serve. So, this has been a really distinct pleasure for me to be here at Placer County. I wish I had been here 20 years ago, but it seemed to have worked out well for you and for me. And once again, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
It has been an absolute joy to work with you. You are dry, droll, funny, intelligent, well-read, stunningly handsome, of course. But most importantly, you have just really been a passionate advocate for the libraries. And it's particularly important to me, because we do have four libraries. In District 5, we have Kings Beach, Tahoe City, Colfax, and Forest Hill. I don't think I'm leaving any out.
Meta Vista.
Meta Vista, I'm sorry. I was leaving one out.
Happy game.
Five libraries. But what I came to discover shortly after meeting you was that just because they're far-flung didn't mean they were far from your mind, and that they all had importance to you, because you realized what importance they had to the communities. And I just want to thank you for your time at Placer County, but just your time historically working for libraries. It's critically important to our society, to our culture. A literate, educated culture is the hope of our future, and I want to thank you for your part in that.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Supervisor Holmes, did you want to add something?
No, I have to go.
Supervisor Wigan.
Mark, you've always struck me of having such a controlled, moderated, professional temperament. If you guys are going to have a Christmas party, I just want, I want to be there. Yesterday, we celebrated the county's most recent expansion of a library, a dramatic change in Rockland from what was there as compared to what we have now, and it was done in an extraordinarily innovative way in collaboration with the city and with the Friends. And it took a long time for us to get here, and of course, in the last five years, you took us over the goal line. And I think that mirrors all the skill sets that you did bring to the job, finding different ways to reach the highest level of service and for incredibly low traditional cost. So, it's been a pleasure to work with you for even just a brief time. Sure glad you came here, and congratulations on your retirement. I hope you stay involved in the community.
I will. Thank you very much.
Mark, I just wanted to thank you. We didn't get a chance to work together a lot, but the things that I saw that came forward for us to look at and improve were well-done, and it was great to support you and your staff and what you're willing to do. And I think yesterday was a culmination of your tenure in Placer County, and that was a great example of building a building for just a fraction of what, you know, it would have cost if we'd had to do it from scratch, and it was a great job, and thank you. Wish you well in your retirement.
Appreciate it.
You know, libraries are often associated with history, with studying what's come before us, and what I've been most impressed by is your vision of the future. And in an era when many people question whether libraries are even needed, given the technology explosion, you have charted a pretty clear course for the future of Placer County libraries, and we're definitely better off for your service. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you.
And we have one more presentation that it is our great pleasure to make of an individual leaving us after a number of years of service, and given that Supervisor Wigan's tenure on the board most greatly coincided with Anita Yoder's service as our Public Information Officer, I've asked Supervisor Wigan if he would make this presentation. Anita?
Anita, in the manner of Anita Yoder, Public Information Officer, for nearly 20 years of dedicated service, so bear with me as I read this. Anita has been the face and voice of Placer County for almost 20 years in her role as County Public Information Officer, frequently appearing in front of television cameras and being quoted to newspapers while handling both routine and controversial issues with tact and skill. Whereas Anita was a pioneer in her field, becoming Placer County's Public Information Officer in May of 1991, at a time when few public agencies had full-time PIOs and developing a statewide reputation among her peers as a skilled spokeswoman. Whereas Anita supported the Board of Supervisors, County Exec Office, for more than 20 years, other departments managing information on high-profile issues such as land use conflicts, public health threats, and emergencies. Whereas Anita's communication skills were most apparent during emergencies such as wildfires, floods, hazardous material spills, avalanches, train derailments, and public health crises. Whereas many innovations have been introduced by Anita over the years, including the PIO team of trained volunteers from many departments who can assist the Public Information Officer in major emergencies. Whereas Anita's death handling of crisis communication won her, in Placer County in 1992, CAPPY Gold Award for Crisis Response and Emergency Public Information from the Sacramento Public Relations Association. Whereas Anita, never content to rest on her laurels, worked to improve her skills by frequently taking training from such agencies as the California Emergency Management Agency, CAL FIRE, the U.S. Forest Service. Whereas Anita has handled her job with grace and tact, maintaining a cheery disposition even in the most trying times that treat that one of many friends throughout the county. Whereas Anita was quick to volunteer for special projects even when she was already busy with her regular duties, and was willing to work long into the night on weekends during emergencies and other occasions when her expertise was needed. Whereas Anita was committed to providing employees with a fun, informative newsletter, Placer Gold. Whereas Anita was active in many community activities that demonstrated her commitment to public and complemented her county responsibilities. And whereas her community activities include 35 years of service for the American Red Cross, mostly as a volunteer, handling such varied duties as responding to emergencies in the United States and abroad, helping organize a popular CPR Sunday project that trained thousands of people, and being involved in Special Olympics. Whereas the Sacramento Sierra Chapter of the Red Cross bestowed upon Anita two of its top honors, the Clara Barton Volunteer of the Year Award in 1999, and the James McCombe Lifetime Achievement Award in 2006, and the Sacramento Public Relations Association gave her a Lifetime Achievement Award in 2001. Whereas Anita's legacy is a Public Information Officer and Emergency Communications Team who are dedicated to providing the public with accurate, timely information, committed to working long, hard hours when necessary to accomplish that goal. Whereas Anita has decided it is time to retire so she can spend more time with her husband, Bill, their children and grandchildren, while doing community service work and enjoying such hobbies as photography, hiking, and bicycling. Now, for there be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Placer, on behalf of the citizens of Placer County, acknowledge with great appreciation and the exceptional service of Anita Yoder, and wish her well in the future.
So, before I come down there, I'm going to tell everybody a story on Anita Yoder. Since we've been around so long, years ago, I was chair, and it was just the State Director of Department of Health and Human Services who was up to visit Placer County, because we actually have an extraordinary Department of Health and Human Services also. And we're sitting in a meeting, and then afterward, of course, Anita was there to take some pictures, so we can make the most out of this moment. And she takes a bunch of pictures with the two of us, and then kind of did something else and came back and said, oh, Robert, this was a while ago, because she said, I forgot to put film in the camera. But we graciously sat back and took more pictures. So, with that, Anita.
Well, actually, the truth of the matter is, Robert and I and all the rest of you have had a lot of fun over the years. I appreciate, I thank you for sharing that story. It was always one of my favorites, too, one of my low moments. Basically, I've had the opportunity, and I need to thank you for letting me stay here. I've worked with, if I count them right, 16 different Boards of Supervisors members, three different CEOs, and 12 elected officials, and other elected officials. And to be quite candid, it's been a great adventure. No one has enjoyed this job more than I have, never. It's been a tremendous ride. It's been full of really high, fun things, like the opportunity to meet the gentleman whose picture I took without film, the opportunity to work on when Placer Legacy was born, the opportunity to be here when we had tremendous flooding. You learn from all these things, whether they're good or bad, so it's been kind of a roller coaster from time to time, but I'm very pleased to have been here, and I thank all of you very, very much. My message to everyone, I guess, is I'm so darn proud of local government. I'm so darn proud of the county, at a time when government gets bashed, employees get bashed regularly everywhere. I've got to tell you that I think this is a very hard-working group of people. I'm very proud of the fact that you've managed, through this terrible emergency, through this terrible financial crisis, to keep people working, to keep services going. I'm very proud of the people I've worked with over the years. It's tremendous. They do tremendous work. They work really hard to make sure people get what they want, get what they need, and they provide services best they can. I've got to thank my husband, Bill, who's put up with me all these years through all these strange things that I've done. Anyway, thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to work here.
Where do you think you're going?
Out of a sense of self-preservation. We need to, Supervisor Holmes.
Anita, I just want to let you know how much I've enjoyed working with you for the past six years. You're always available, letting me know, helping me with anything that I had to do, any presentations that I had to make, and being there sometimes, so I could inform you what was going on, which is not uncommon every once in a while. But anyhow, it's been a joy to work with you, and I really hope that you have success in your retirement. I know you'll be very busy, so God bless you.
Thank you, Jim.
Supervisor Montgomery.
Anita, there are those who would describe you as competent. I would use much higher price than that, and indeed, I have. You have been extremely helpful to me in understanding not just the intricacies of media and communicating with the media, but understanding the intricacies within the county. Just your tenure here has been very valuable for me, but I think to tell a little bit of a story similar, not similar to Robert's, but along the same vein... of a story similar, not similar to Robert's, but along the same vein, the one real terrific memory I have is when we went for a hike together. Went up to see Gould Park up in Cisco Grove, and met your husband at that as well, and we spent the afternoon together and had a terrific hike and looked at the wildflowers and really, I think, created a connection that hadn't existed prior to that point. I've enjoyed our time together, and I hope that you continue to be one of Placer's leading ladies, and will continue to keep in contact with us and join us for all our various and sundry, non-county social events.
Okay. Supervisor Rockholm?
Anita, it's been my honor the last four years to work with you and your staff, and how you've treated me and helped me and helped me write articles, and the things that you do and have done for the county are immeasurable, and I wish you all the success. You know, it's funny about that story of the film, back in '84, '85, whatever year it was, when the 49ers were still in Rockland, I got a half an hour alone with Steve Young and with Rick Padilla from the Sheriff's Department. They were working security, and I had my camera, and I was taking all these pictures, and it was really cool, and I got home and I had no film. And so needless to say, I know what that feels like. But I wish you all the best in your retirement, and, you know, it's been a pleasure.
Thank you, Rocky.
Robert? Anita, we've been in public service during a time, and particularly lately, when it's so much more popular to bash government than it is to look even for a reason to compliment us. And the board, over these years, has decided that in that, it's more and more important to tell our side of the story, to get the word out, to use new technology, even digital cameras, to provide more of a fair, and open, and honest, and transparent basis for individuals to make their decisions as they interface with local government. And you've taken us an extraordinary distance, so you actually now have a staff, and we're better at that, and we're getting better, and I think it's one of the reasons why Placer County is such a great place. It makes us work harder and makes us more available, and it shares that communication back and forth with the public. So thank you very much, and I expect you to stay involved as event here and look forward to seeing you in the future. Thanks.
Thank you, Robert.
You have what I believe to be the most difficult job in the county in terms of balancing needs versus wants, because we have a need to communicate, and folks like Joe Carroll, Ryan McCarthy, Stephen Jones, Art Campos, Gus Thompson, all have wants for what they wanted out of you over these 20 years. And not only do you have a board that is comprised, over those 20 years, of some different personalities, I think back to the first election you had to undergo where a 25-year-old right-wing kid got elected at the same time that Rex Blumfield got elected, and you had the pleasure of managing personalities and press releases through that. And so I think that you have always maintained your appropriate sense of balance, as you have tried to present a story to the public, paid appropriate deference to the individuals that you were tasked with assisting and covering, and you learned early on, as we worked together, not to try to script me. Congratulations on your retirement. We look forward to your continued service to the public.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody. I would be amiss if I didn't say a special thanks to Mike Fitch and Robert Miller, who work so closely with me, they keep me sane. Thank you every much, very, very much.
Okay, we will continue with our 9:45 timed item. This is a resolution commending members of the Cost Savings Task Force for their commitment, hard work, and lasting contributions to Placer County. We'll go ahead and let folks wander out.
I'll go ahead and make a quick introduction and then turn it over to Anita, if that's acceptable. Actually, this is an item going back to February 2009 and even before then, when a number of county employees had offered up over 200 cost-saving ideas for consideration as we got into this economic difficulty. Your board in February of 2009 authorized the creation of what we call Cost Saving Committees. Over 80 management confidential employees volunteered to staff those. CEO office, the folks that you're going to hear some of today, volunteered extra time to go ahead and coordinate those meetings, looked at all of those recommendations. You, your board members, volunteered time to sit on those committees in a capacity, and came up with rather substantial savings of an ongoing nature. I won't steal all of Anita's thunder, but I just want to remind folks that this was an animal that has been created under the authorization of the board, done some great things, and a long-lasting basis of saving money for the taxpayers. So with that, Anita, if you'd go ahead and start with the presentation.
Okay. Thank you. Anita Reese from the County Executive Office. Again, today, we're here to recognize members of the Cost Savings Task Force for their commitment, hard work, and lasting contributions in helping Placer County achieve cost savings, enhance productivity, and introduce operational economies. As Tom said, they reviewed probably over 200 items, with about maybe 70 coming forward for recommended for implementation. These items do complement the items that your board has already implemented. And actually, with that, we do want to acknowledge the board's participation on the various Cost Saving Task Forces. Chairman Euler, you're a member of two subcommittees, the Benefits and Organizational Subcommittee. Actually, there's five or six committees. Benefits, Automation and Information Technology; Organizational, Transportation and Travel; Purchasing; and the Receiver, kind of miscellaneous committee. We'd like to recognize Supervisor Rockholm. He was a member of the Transportation and Travel Committee. Supervisor Wiegand was a member of the, let's see, sorry, Benefits Committee. Supervisor Holmes, you're a member of the Purchasing. And Supervisor Montgomery also did double duty on my committee, Automation and Information Technology and the Organizational. At this time, I will announce a subcommittee, invite each chair and CEO coordinator to the podium to receive their certificate from Chairman Euler. The first committee, the Benefits Committee, Rick Erie is the chair, and Denise Medlin, the CEO Coordinator. The next committee, the Automation and Information Technology Committee, Brian Dagger is the chair, along with Robert Long, they split the duties, and Anita Reese as the coordinator. The Organizational Committee, Joel Swift is the chair. Catherine Ripley, the CEO Coordinator. Transportation and Travel, Troy Held was the chair. Lena Hughey and Mary Herdigan, split duties as the CEO coordinators. And today, Shannon Herdigan, her daughter, is here to receive her certificate. The Purchasing Committee, Nancy Appelinapp, was the chair, along with Ron Baker, CEO Coordinator. And our Receiver Committee, Paul Thompson is the chair. They dealt with miscellaneous items that nobody else wanted. Leslie Hobson, the CEO Coordinator. And with that, that concludes our presentation.
And as the chair takes the seat, I do want to point out for the benefit of the folks who may be viewing at home, is that the annualized savings of this and the other 70 or so folks that are on these committees is nearly $5 million a year in ongoing savings. And that also, when you look at what the Board of Supervisors has done to reduce costs, that's another $15 million over that annualized process. And that's why I think many of the comments that you've heard today, Placer County being able to weather this economic dilemma that we have much better than others, because the hard work, the direction of the board, and the hard work of employees contributing ideas and then implementing those ideas. So thank you very much.
Supervisor Montgomery?
I really just wanted to say thank you to everyone. It was actually fascinating for me to serve on the two committees. It taught me a lot about the inner workings of the county, which even after two years still remain a bit of a mystery, as I'm sure many of you can understand. But I think what was most rewarding to me was seeing how committed you all were to not just making changes to save money for the county, but to make changes that save money for the county that makes sense, that help us move forward our mission at the county to serve the public and to serve the needs that are out there, and not short-change people in doing that. So I really do appreciate the work that you put into this. It was hard, it was often frustrating, but it was a job very, very well done, so thank you all.
And as somebody that had the pleasure of serving on a couple committees, I know the tremendous amount of time that you folks put in above and beyond your real jobs, and no detail was spared in ferreting out the merits of any number of issues that were brought before these committees. And tremendous amount of diligence was paid to these suggestions, and I think it was reflective of the respect that you have for the opinions of your colleagues in the county, and certainly reflective of the dedication and commitment that you put into your jobs on a daily basis. So thank you very much for your service. Supervisor Rockholm, did you have something?
I'm just going to add that the work that was done was meaningful work, as you've just heard CEO Miller mention, the amount of money saved. So you went into it, and you actually did the work and came up with some better ways to do it, and I'm sure that that will continue, you know, into the future, because I think the people we represent expect that now, to do more with less, so to speak, but to do it in a smarter way, so therefore, we still can provide the services. But thank you for your work.
We do actually need to adopt a resolution as part of our staff packet on page 12. So we have a motion by Supervisor Rockholm to adopt the resolution commending members of the Cost Savings Task Force for their service, seconded by Supervisor Holmes. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, none? Thank you so much. Thank you all again very much for your service. We will take up our 10 o'clock timed item. This is a request to approve an agricultural preserve in Williamson Act contract number Alex is going to present. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Honorable Board. Alex Fish with the Planning Department. The item for your consideration this morning is the county's lone request for establishment of an agricultural preserve and execution of Williamson Act contract for this calendar year. That request is brought on behalf of one of West Placer's longtime farm families, the Shiber's. The request specifically entails creation of an agricultural preserve and execution of Williamson Act contract for three properties totaling 113 acres. They're located just west of the City of Lincoln city limits on Moore Road, and those properties are farmed in conjunction with a much larger ranch that the Shiber's own to the north. They've been farming these properties for a number of years on a lease arrangement, recently purchased the property in 2009, and thus have brought this request forward. The Agricultural Commission, at its November 8 meeting, determined that the request met all of the county's requirements for establishment of a new preserve and authorization of a contract. Thus, I bring forward their recommendation for your consideration. Your report packet includes a series of four recommendations, and in short, my recommendation would be to adopt the findings included in Exhibit 3 of your packet, and to authorize the chair of the board to execute that contract, which is attached.
Thank you. Any questions? Board members have any questions? Alex, Supervisor Wiegand?
Just to comment, and that the fifth-generation Shiber currently is on the farm.
Okay. Seeing other questions, this is a public hearing. Any member of the board, or of the public, I'm sorry, any member of the public wish to address the board on this Williamson Act request prior to us taking action, please do so now. And seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Bring back.
Second.
We have a motion by Rockholm, seconded by Wiegand, in order to approve the Williamson Act request. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, none? Thank you very much. Thank you, Alex. All right, our 10:15 is a seed drill-related item, Engineering and Surveying, Zoning Text Amendment Regarding Surface Mining Reclamation Inspection Fees. And I have down here that Wes is going to present this item, but I'm not seeing Wes. Did we sneak up on him with a 10:15 time? Is that what we do?
Good morning, board, our chair, members of the board. My name is Ted Rel. I work for the Engineering and Surveying Department, and apparently, I'm covering for Wes for a few minutes.
Well, here comes. Watch your heads. Watch your heads.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen.
Morning.
Our apologies. Good morning. I'm sorry.
I am behind, but not that far behind. Thank you.
Given your agenda, I can understand why you're behind. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Wes Dicker, Engineering Surveying, with me is Rick Erie, our Engineering Manager. We'll do this as briefly as we can. The item before you is a request to amend county code, the zoning ordinance in particular, to make some minor modifications for accommodation of SMARA. With that, I'll let Rick talk.
Thank you, Wes, and good morning, Chairman, and members of the board. This item can be found on page 35 of your board package, and it's, as Wes has alluded to, it contains some recommended changes to the surface mining and reclamation portion of the zoning ordinance. SMRA stands for the Service Mining and Reclamation Act, and as Placer County acts as lead agency on behalf of the state to administer SMARA, which is consistent with state law, and most agencies within California also charge a fee for these services. In regards to the thresholds, Placer County actually has more stringent requirements than that of the states. Placer County requires mining operators to be subject to SMARA when they are processing 250 cubic yards of material or more per year, where the state's requirement's actually 1,000 cubic yards. And we'd like to try to be, we'd like, one of the recommendations today is to make ours consistent with state standards. Staff spends 130 hours per year administering SMARA on nine mines within Placer County. Seven of those are considered active mines, and two are inactive mines. An inactive mine is simply a mine that's been approved to commence mining activities but has chosen for mostly economic reasons not to start yet. And here's a map showing the locations of the mines within Placer County, and districts 2, 3, and 4, as you can see, have mines within them. They're kind of spread out throughout the county. Three are in the West Placer area, two are in the Penran-O'Fer area, there is one in Meadow Vista, and three in the Forest Hill area. The two inactive mines, Black Canyon and Hoffman Pitts, are located in the Forest Hill area. The typical tasks that staff does to administer SMARA on behalf of the state include field inspections and reporting, reviewing quantity-cost estimates, reviewing financial assurances and securities, enforcement and compliance with state regulations such as water quality, grading, and drainage regulations, reviewing reclamation plans, as well as correspondence between the county and the applicant, as well as between the county and the state. So in conclusion, our recommendation is that your board conduct a public hearing, 2:01, adopt an ordinance amending Section 17.56.270 to A, revise the amount of processed material subject to SMRA to be consistent with that of the states, and B, allow for an annual fee with CPI adjustments, as well as 2, adopt a resolution to establish an annual fee to administer SMARA. And that concludes our presentation, and we're available to answer any questions you may have.
Board members have any questions? The staff? Okay, seeing none, this is a public hearing. We'll open this up to any members of the public wishing to address the board on this item before we take action. Please step up and identify yourself for the record.
Yes, good morning. Brian Keen with Takered Aggregates. Briefly, we just wanted to express our support for the amendment. We've been monitoring it for a while, compare with the amounts for the proposed fees, and just about it.
Thank you for being here this morning. Appreciate it. Anybody else want to address the board on this item? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for action. I heard a motion by Rockholm and a second by Wiegand. Unless there's other discussion, all in favor, please. Unless there's other discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, none? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We now take up our 10:20 timed item. This is the, this is a continuation of an item that we first heard beginning on November 23 regarding a project so named Enclave in the Granite Bay Community Plan area, and I believe Mr. Ivaldi will lead our discussion on this this morning.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the Board. This project, the Enclave at Granite Bay, was previously considered by the Board on November 23. At that meeting, the applicant expressed their intent to revise their project, reducing the proposed number of residential lots from 26 to 13 lots, which is consistent with the land use on adjoining properties to the east of the project site. As directed by the Board, staff is back today with the necessary information for you to consider a general plan amendment and rezone that would allow for the development of the 12-acre site. The 12-acre project site, just real quick, is located in Granite Bay on the north side of Elmhurst Drive at the intersection of Swan Lake Drive. The Ridge View and Oak Hill Elementary Schools are over to the west in this area. There are rural residential lots to the north of the project site, to the east, and then more dense-type residential development over to the south in the Tree Lake area. The revised 13-lot project steel requires a general plan amendment and rezoning, however not at the intensity as previously proposed. With that said, the requested land use changes would allow for up to 13 residential lots, where only six lots would, could potentially be developed under the current land use. The Granite Bay Community Plan land use designation is proposed to be changed from rural residential, which has a minimum parcel size ranging from 2.3 to 4.6 acres, and it's being changed to rural low-density residential, or proposed. That is 40,000 square foot lots roughly to 2.3 acres in size. The land use designation already exists on the southern portion of the site and also on adjacent properties to the east, so that's this purple area up in this area. Looking at a larger view, the rural residential land use designation was applied to the large area south of Douglas Volard, past Yerika Road, all the way down to the Tree Lake Development. That's the area in the darker green, all in this area. The, as identified in the Granite Bay Community Plan, the rural residential land use was intended to preserve the rural character of the area by allowing agricultural uses, particularly the recreational use of horses, and providing home sites for those that want larger lots and a rural environment to live in. One area where this land use was not applied appears to be around the Granite Bay High School, the elementary schools, and Ron Fies Park, where properties were designated rural low-density residential, and that's these areas just along in this area. Let me go back real quick before I get too far ahead. The rural low-density residential land use, which is the, what the applicant is requesting the project site be changed to, is identified in the community plan as a transition zone between clearly rural areas and large-lot suburban projects. This land use designation was intended to provide for a wide variety of housing in terms of cost, style, and size, while at the same time allowing for equestrian uses and small hobby farms. This land use appears to be, to suit the project site well. It is clearly located within a transition zone between the existing Tree Lake Development, which is this bright yellow area down here, and the large-lot residential uses up in this area. And just so you know, the project site's right in that area. Moving to the zoning exhibit, in order to maintain consistency with the Granite Bay Community Plan land use designation and develop the property as a planned residential development, the zoning is proposed to be changed from RAB 100, which is a residential agricultural zone with a 2.3-acre minimum, and they want to change that to RSAG B40 with a PV of 1.3. Now, that's a residential single-family zone with a combining agricultural zone and 40,000 square-foot minimum lot sizes. This would be an extension of the RSAG B40 zone, district located southwest of the project site. This is all within this area. Just real quick, there's a larger map showing this area, and as you can see, the RSAG B40 is kind of mixed sporadically. Project site's right here, there's some area zoned RSAG B40 here, and also down in this area, up along here, so it's pretty prevalent within that planning area. The inclusion of the planned residential combining district would allow the 12-acre project site to be developed as a planned residential development with up to 13 residential lots, depending on any density bonuses provided. So, at the last board meeting, there was a discussion about the applicant's request to remove the landmark cottonwood trees. Staff is not asking that you take any action regarding the trees today. As you are aware, the applicant originally requested that the landmark trees be removed to allow access to the site, but more importantly, the applicant expressed concerns about safety due to the age and size of the trees and the potential for branch failure and risk to pedestrians and their vehicles in that area. These concerns were based on two arborist reports prepared for the applicant that had provided somewhat different assessments on the trees. In order to assess if there was any imminent risk to be public, the county went ahead and contracted with North Fork Associates to conduct a peer review of these reports to determine if any corrective action needed to be taken. North Fork Associates, they concluded that although the cottonwood trees are very large, there were several corrective actions that could be taken to significantly reduce the hazard potential and improve the structure of the trees. In addition, the arborist report indicated that the landmark cottonwood trees would remain in fairly good health if the recommended maintenance is performed and there's no disturbance to the root zone of the trees. So, although the board is only considering a land use change at this time, the board may want to consider removal of the trees if there is a safety concern, or the board may defer such a decision until such time a tentative subdivision map is considered for the site. So, that wraps up our report. We do have a recommendation in regards to the land use changes, and we are asking that the board take the following actions. Number one is to adopt the environmental document, the mitigated negative declaration. We're asking that you adopt a resolution approving a general plan amendment and adopt a resolution, or an ordinance approving the rezone. And lastly, as you remember, there was an appeal as part of this project when the tentative map was part of it, but that also applied to the land use change, so we're asking that you deny the appeal of Camille Courtney on behalf of Pasture Land Development without prejudice in order to allow the applicant to resubmit a modified tentative subdivision map consistent with the general plan amendment and rezone if so approved by the board. That wraps up my presentation. I'm available for questions if you have any.
Thank you, EJ. Any members of the board have any questions? The staff before we open the public hearing? Supervisor Montgomery?
Yeah, I just had a technical question on the tree piece of this. Are you looking for a specific recommendation or direction from the board today as to whether we determine it's a safety hazard, or we give you direction to wait until the tentative map? Or if we don't say anything, do we just wait for the tentative map?
Yeah, you know, the county went out, we had an arborist report prepared that did a peer review of both of the other arborist reports, so we're comfortable with the North Fork's assessment that the tree is in good health with minor maintenance, as long as there's no impact to the root zone of the tree, which there is no development proposed at this time, so that's not a concern. So, we would, from staff's point of view, defer it to at such time a project actually comes in.
So, if we don't give you a specific direction today, one way or another, it stays until the tentative map?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions? The staff before we open the public hearing? Okay, seeing none, this is a continuation of the public hearing that we opened back on the 23rd. However, if folks who spoke on the 23rd also wish to readdress the board today, you are welcome to do so. Is there anybody that wishes to address the board on this item? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing before I bring it back to the board for any action. I see the applicant slash appellant, I guess you wear both hats, representing Pasture Land Development is here. Was there anything that you thought necessary the board know before we take action? Okay, seeing none. What is the pleasure of the board?
Second.
We have a motion, Rockholm, a second, Montgomery, to approve staff's recommendations, and I'm sure counsel will advise us that we have a number of findings that are contained within this motion.
That's exactly what I was going to question. That the motion, I anticipate, will take up the findings not only for the actions recommended on the slide before you, but on pages 3, 4, and 5, there are a number of findings that are supporting those, and I think it'd be appropriate to be included in the motion.
That is pages 3, 4, and 5 of the staff report on this item, pages 45, 46, and 47 of our overall board agenda.
Motion to contain.
All right, and I'm sure the second concurs?
Oh, yes.
Thank you so much. Okay, we have a motion, a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, none? Thank you very much. Okay, we will move on to our 10:30 timed item. This is a Health and Human Services item dealing with a Beulynson hearing regarding dental services, and Dr. Starr, I believe, will be making a presentation here.
Good morning. Good morning, Chairman. Thank you. You can see those kind of things work out there. Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman Euler and Board members. Jim Gandle, Assistant Director of Health and Human Services. The proposal before you today is the reduction of dental services for the medically indigent population within Placer County, and also the closure of our Auburn Dental Clinic. This action requires a public hearing, which we'll be conducting today, and I want to specifically note that this deal specifically with the Auburn Dental Clinic does not impact our Tahoe Dental Clinic, which we will continue to operate. By way of some background, indigent dental services have been a state mandated responsibility for the county since 1982, and in 1994, the then sitting board for Placer County established our current scope of services. We currently provide that scope of services at our Auburn Dental Clinic, which is located in the DeWitt Center. Currently, that dental clinic serves approximately 450 medically indigent adults through about 2,100 visits annually. Our clinic also historically has operated by being a dentical provider and also providing services to the private pay and other dental insured individuals within the county. In 2009, the state reduced the scope of services that it will cover for the dentical population, and so subsequently, Placer County Dental Clinic terminated its voluntary commitment to serving those dentical patients, and we now refer those patients out to private dentical providers. That provided a critical source of revenue, and so it's become increasingly more challenging for us to continue our clinic in its current operation. The fiscal impact for what we're proposing today by closing the dental clinic in Auburn and limiting our scope of dental services to the medically indigent population will save approximately $273,000 annually. $111,000 of that will come from the agreement we'll enter into with Chapada Dental Services to provide those clinical services to our medically indigent, and approximately $162,000 will be saved annually by that reduced scope of services. Now, it's important to note that as an organization, we have looked at this very carefully from both a caring perspective and from a fiscally prudent perspective, and the scope of services that we're proposing today is consistent with the dentical services that are offered not only in California but in most states across the country. So, we feel we are consistent with providing continued access to the most essential services for dental care that are going to prevent serious injury, infection, disability, et cetera. And so, on a bright note, I'm happy today to be able to show up without, with not just a problem, but with a proposed solution of how we're going to mitigate some of those challenges, and that will be through the proposed agreement that we structured with Chapada Indian Health, which we will be bringing forward later today with the successful resolution of this public hearing.
Let me just clarify, we're going to hear that item immediately after this item. We will take that item up.
Okay, fine. So, if you approve this recommendation for limiting the scope of services, reducing the scope of services, then we will collectively to be able to assure three things. We'll be able to assure continued access for the most essential dental service, we'll be able to ensure uninterrupted access by immediately closing our clinic and contracting with Chapada, and we'll also be able to ensure that medically indigent individuals who need the most essential care will continue to receive that in uninterrupted manner. So, with those things said, I'll step aside. Dr. Mark Starr is here with me. We can answer any questions during the public hearing. So, Chairman Euler, I'll turn it back to you to conduct the public hearing, and we stand ready to answer any questions. Thank you.
And Dr. Starr, did you have anything you wanted to add first before we go ahead? No?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay. Supervisor Holmes, do you have a question or comment?
I was just curious, is Chapada, they open five days a week, or those services, or?
Yes, and they have after-hours emergency care available as well.
Okay, great, yes.
Okay, Supervisor Montgomery?
I'm looking over Attachment A and Attachment B. Attachment A being the proposed eliminated services.
Yes.
And Attachment B being the proposed, I guess, keep services. And maybe because every time I go to the dentist, I get a filling, so it seems like pretty basic dental care, I'm wondering why fillings are in the group that are proposed to be eliminated.
Yes. Well, as a dentist, I had, shared your same concerns, and so clearly, as we looked at this over the last several months, if, what I can say is, in the scope of services that we are providing, we'll continue to provide, there will be what is considered sedative fillings. So, if someone comes in with a gaping hole in their tooth and they have an issue, we can put a sedative filling in there, which is not a permanent amalgam or gold or crown, but it is a filling that actually we can remove the decay and treat the tooth in a manner that's going to keep people out of infection, out of pain, out of swelling, and so those types of things. So, many of you, I'm sure, have had intermediate sedative fillings throughout the years while you're having other procedures done. So, as these individuals do enter our clinic with significant issues, we will be able to treat them appropriately.
So, is that what we lay people called temporary fillings?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, other questions? The staff before we open the public hearing? Okay, seeing none, this is a public hearing. Go ahead and open this up to any members of the public wishing to address the board on this item prior to us taking action. So, go ahead and step to the podium. Identify yourself, and try, if you can, try to limit your comments to three minutes. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to present my concerns. My name is Gregory Pastas. I'm a long-term resident in Placer County, lived in Placer County for 38 years. I am one of many who is suffering from a dwindling economy right now. I'm currently actively seeking employment, and I'm having a hard time with it right now. I'm waiting for some propositions with work, and currently, the county provides dental care that I seek after, that I've always been able to provide for myself when I was working. And I believe that the citizens of Placer County deserve to be able to get treated just as well as any other patient would be treated if they went to any other dental clinic anywhere from a private agency. Temporary fillings don't satisfy me. I think if somebody should get a filling to prevent further complications with periodal and orthopedic problems that could arise, it would, in the long run, save a lot of money to be able to treat people correctly without cutting any corners and doing something temporary, because if it's done temporarily, then people have to come in all over again and do it all over again. You know, it's like patching a road, okay? If you have a pothole on the road, it's better to use real asphalt than just put gravel in there. And I haven't used the clinic that often. I have used it, and I found the staff to be very professional. I found it very humbling to go in there and see how small the facility was, considering how big Placer County is, which is also my concern for the medical clinic. how big Placer County is, which is also my concern for the medical clinic, being the only medical clinic in all of Placer County. I'll tell you, if anything, they ought to increase public, you know, access to being able to get that type of treatment rather than downsize. I see a lot of areas where Placer County spends a lot of unnecessary money. I see them wasting a lot of things. I was over in DeWitt Center a couple days ago, over at the Welcome Center, to get some job resource information on the computers that they provide over there, and there was office furniture all over the place that they destroyed with an excavator, where they're tearing down all those buildings, and I found that to be very wasteful. And with all the money that they could, that they could have saved by not having to replace that furniture, they could keep the clinic open.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
Does that mean I have to stop now?
If you finish your thought, that would be, that would be well regarded. Appreciate it.
Hopefully, somebody else in the public is here to say something. It's fine, my way, there'd be like a thousand people here right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to address the board on this item?
Good morning. My name is Herb Whitaker, and I'm the managing attorney of the Local Office of Legal Services of Northern California. We are the nonprofit civil legal aid program that serves the low-income population of Placer County. Many of our clients are people who receive services from Placer Health Services and Dental Services. I'm also a resident of Placer County, and I would like to keep my comments very brief, and for the record, Legal Services of Northern California opposes these reductions in dental health services. Now let me be very clear, at this point, we are not opposed to shutting down the clinic and redirecting the services to the Chapada Clinic. We have no opposition to that whatsoever. What we're opposed to is the level of service reduction. Let me begin by saying very quickly that I appreciate the approach that the county has taken. I appreciate the fact that the county invited me to meet with them so that they could explain the cuts that are being made, and they could share the information with me. I appreciate the fact that the county is having this Beelinsen hearing so that the county can hear from the public, and I appreciate the fact that the county has some very serious budget issues to address. The purpose for my opposition is with respect to the level of services that will be cut. As it has been explained to the county, to this board, the county will save only about $162,000 per year by reducing the level of services. Now, that's a significant amount of money, but in the overall scheme of things, I think that those might be savings that we may be making now, but there could be costs associated with that earlier. I had the very same question that Supervisor Montgomery had, which is just what will the level of service cuts be, especially with regards to the fillings? And I would ask that the board seriously take a look at Exhibit A, which shows the level of cuts. Most of these cuts are going to be in the area of preventive care and in the area of restorative care, such as fillings and that sort of thing, and except for temporary fillings, that leaves the county dental services with very little options except for extractions. And so that's sort of the default level of service that the county will be falling to. There was an article in the Auburn Journal just recently where one of the recipients of dental health services from Placer County said, and I quote, "So I guess there will be a bunch of people running around with no teeth." And it sort of strikes me, as I've been reading my history books lately, reading about the British Navy, that that was their approach to dental care, was extractions. And the simple, simple reality is that I think that we can do better than a default system that, that results in extractions. That will cause serious pain to the people who will no longer be able to receive services. That will also not prevent these problems from getting worse, so there will be costs later on, and in addition, there will be ancillary healthcare costs, because we've learned that dental health also affects the person's overall healthcare. So I'm afraid we'll be saving some pennies today, and it's going to be costing the county more later. In conclusion, I would just like to say that Legal Services of Northern California opposes this level of dental health cuts.
Thank you, Mr. Whitaker. Anybody else from the public wish to address the board on this item? I don't think Joel is actually getting up to address the board on this item, but anybody else from the public wish to address the board on this item? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public hearing, bring it back to the board. Any board members have any questions for staff at this time? Any clarifying questions or comments? We have a motion by Supervisor Rockholm in order to adopt the proposed reduction of scope of dental services provided by Placer County, and in regard to the proposed closure of the Auburn Dental Clinic and the relocation of those services effective January 1, 2011. That motion was by Rockholm, seconded by Weigant. Supervisor Holmes, under discussion, something to add?
I had a question. This is a, there's a series of cuts in the Health and Human Services Department, and this is just one of them because of the state's shortfall. Is that, is that a fair?
Yes, supervisor.
Okay.
Why don't we go ahead with a roll call on this one, please?
Rockholm?
Yes.
Weigant?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Euler. Hi. Okay, thank you. We will now take up Item 16D, which is a proposed contract with the Chapada Indian Health Program. And Dr. Starr, is this you?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and do that item. Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Mark Starr, Community Health and Clinics Director, and again, this is a follow-on to the previous item regarding county-provided dental services, and the action is requesting that you approve a contract with Chapada Indian Health Program for dental services for 18 months, beginning January 1 of 2011, in the maximum amount of $240,000, and authorize our department director for subsequent amendments up to 10 percent. This is budgeted with county general funds and would be appropriate amount in each of the two fiscal years covered by the contract. As part of our approach to provide the most critical dental services to eligible medically indigent adults, within the current fiscal limitations you've just heard about, Health and Human Services undertook an evaluation of possible changes to the delivery of services, and this resulted in a structured bid process that the county conducted with procurement on behalf of Health and Human Services conducting the bid, and Chapada Indian Health Program submitted the best responsive bid. This will result in savings to the county, as you've heard, and will also assure that the most important dental care can, can be provided to all of our eligible MCSP patients. The Chapada Indian Health Program has a strong reputation in the region as a nonprofit organization providing dental services to people who reside in this area, and our patients will be getting services at a convenient location just a few blocks from our existing dental clinic in the Dewitt Center, and there'll also be nearby other important services that many of them access in the Dewitt Center, including our medical clinic and eligibility services. By awarding this contract to Chapada, sustainable services in the greater Auburn region will be ensured. I certainly can answer any questions about this contract that haven't already been, been asked in the previous item.
If the board members have any questions, the staff. While this is not a public hearing, the board is happy to receive any public input anybody has on this item prior to us taking action. Anybody wish to address the board? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for action. A motion by Holmes, a second by Rockholm, I'm guessing.
Yes.
Yeah. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, let's take Department Head, Item Number 12. Begin with 12A. Allison, if you want to.
Allison Carlos, to present the contracts for our state and federal legislative advocates along, also with this item, we have an end-of-year summary of advocacy efforts over the last year, and I'll just put a quick framework on this and then turn this over to our state and federal advocates. Basically, over the last year, we've been very busy on both the state and federal level. On the state side, we have been tracking over 300 bills, we did track over 300 bills. We're very responsive and working with your board on letters of support or oppose, and there were five sponsored or cosponsored pieces of legislation, of which Placer County sponsored, of which three became law. On the federal side, we continue to be extremely active in trying to secure funding for our major projects, and those efforts will continue, and Rich Gold's going to talk a little bit more about that. At this point, and for the sake of time, I do want to turn the microphones over to our advocates so that you can hear from them directly. We do have Holland Knight here, Rich Gold is to my right, and Holland Knight has worked for Placer County, that firm, for over 11 years, and has extensive experience, and has been successful over the last 11 years in securing $104 million of funding for projects. Also with us is Paul Yoder. I do want to mention also, Rich Gold is a partner with Holland Knight. We also have Paul Yoder, a partner with Peterson Consulting Incorporated. They are a state advocacy firm, along with Karen Lang with the same firm. And I am going to go ahead and lead off with them making their presentation, and I do also want to say they have a very special presentation for Mary Hurtigan. I'd like to let you know that Mary's watching us today, and she, thanks to her good and excellent organizational efforts, her being the county's legislative coordinator, we've been able to pick up those duties in her absence. So I'm going to turn this over to Peterson.
All right, thank you, Allison. Mr. Chairman, other board members, Paul Yoder, and I am going to let Karen Lang lead us off today, and then I'll talk about the state budget, and we'll take any questions you may have.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members. We had a very busy year with Placer County. You ended up sponsoring quite a handful of bills, actually, the largest number of bills of any of the clients we work on, so very busy year. We started off by introducing SB 1417, which improves the existing law regarding the appointment and supervision of humane officers in the county. We worked extensively with, I just want to acknowledge Brian Wertz, and Devon Bell, and Mary at the beginning, and we, she transitioned over to Allison after the accident, but we spent, I just can't even tell you how much time your staff spent and how phenomenal they were to work with, and we actually ended up getting the bill through the process unanimously, and for anybody who ever watches animal welfare legislation go through the Capitol, that's just a miracle. So we, it got to the governor's desk, and he signed it. There's substantial improvements over current law regarding the appointment of humane officers, and particularly as they pertain to armed officers, and also allowing your law enforcement representatives to have some influence over, or input into the process of appointment. It's a very short synopsis of the bill, it's about a 35-page-long bill. That's the short summary of it. It was signed by the governor, and we had a really nice coalition of support from all over the state, law enforcement groups, animal welfare groups, the CSAC. We had a great coalition of support there, and that was signed into law. The second bill actually had two different lives. AB 1766 started out as a bill to reimburse you for your losses as a result of the 49 fire. I believe the RCRC members of your board, or the rep for your board, understands there's a very intense disagreement in the legislature over what, what county should be able to get reimbursed for when it comes to a fire, and whether or not you get reimbursed, in the view of the Appropriations Committee, is if you have all these, you know, X, Y, and Z in place to prevent fires in the future. Your county actually is almost entirely in compliance with what the Senate Appropriations Committee wants, but their policy is that nobody gets the money until all the counties agree. So we sort of ran into an impasse on that bill, and there's going to be continued work on that issue, but you have not been reimbursed for your fire, and you're in very good company. For example, Santa Barbara County is out $2 million. They've been out $2 million for quite a while, because they can't get reimbursed either. There's a concerted effort underway between RCRC, CSAC, and contract lobbyists such as Paul and I to try and find a solution that gets you reimbursed, but doesn't become, doesn't put into place overly burdensome regulations on the residents who live in the more rural areas. So we're continuing to work on that. The second version of AB 1766 was actually a five-year extension on your blended services pilot project that is administered by Doc Burton. Originally, AB 2039, introduced by Dan Logue, was the bill to actually eliminate the sunset. We had no problems from anybody. It flew through on consent, no problems in the governor's office, and we woke up one morning and he'd vetoed it with a very odd veto message about oversight, even though your project is the national model. So thankfully, we had 1766 parked in the Senate, and it was the perfect bill, so in the very last week of session, in the middle of the night, we gutted and amended a bill, so gutting and amending is not always bad. AB 1766 became the bill to extend by five years the sunset on your blended services pilot project. Governor signed it. All five members of your delegation were instrumental in moving that forward at the last minute, because it's not always easy to do a gut and amend in the middle of the night. And finally, because of what happened with the fire bills, we were able to at least get your individual property tax owner, or property tax, or property owners the tax relief they needed as a result of their personal losses in the fire. We got them added, and in the middle of the night on the last night of session, that was AB 1662 Portantino. So the individuals affected by the fires will get some favorable tax treatment, although the county still is not getting reimbursed until that larger issue is resolved. There are a couple of bills that didn't pass. AB 2157, which would have authorized your probation officers to go from a six, from a every-three-month testing requirement for their firearms used to every six months, would have saved you about $70,000. The Senate Public Safety Committee took issue with trying to save money by reducing training requirements, even though almost all other law enforcement entities in the state don't have to test every three months. That measure was held in Senate Public Safety, and we did try and get you some more flexibility on your medical retirement for your employees, but we weren't able to accomplish that. The larger pension reform issue sort of usurped our trying to do that little thing, and it just didn't get done this year, but we'll continue working with it. We're talking to peers, and I understand that there may be a larger effort through the CSAC process to try and get some flexibility there, so we're paying attention and monitoring that. And with that, I'll turn it back to Paul.
All right, thanks, Karen. Very quickly, board members, the estimated state deficit, current year and budget year is $28 billion, not $25, as previously reported, and I think frankly, the board and the public should assume it'll be $30 billion when all is said and done. The outgoing Governor Arnold Schwarzenegger released a list of $7 billion in solutions to try to address the current year problem. The legislature pretty summarily said, with all due respect, outgoing governor, we're not going to act on those, and I think it's pretty clear that the Speaker and pro temp want to work with the governor-elect. Having said that, one of the things we'd like to point out is that in that list of suggestions for $7 billion in solutions, there are things that will, you will see again when the governor-elect, even being from a different party, even being from a different planet, some believe. Happy holidays, Governor-elect. Nevertheless, you will see those items picked up again. These ideas don't just come out of nowhere. The Department of Finance, the legislative analysts, they're sort of idea factories, and what was given to Arnold Schwarzenegger is being given to Jerry Brown. He will just choose from that menu and go from there. The governor-elect is in the process of holding three forums. He had one in Sacramento last Wednesday. He is having one today in LA on higher education. He's going to have a third on health and social services in San Francisco. Those three forums are being held by the governor-elect to really pull the curtain back, if you will, on the state's budget problem and describe in detail how bad it is, and he's in the process of that. His first budget will be released by January 10, although it may be released as early as Friday, January 7. Very, very quickly, the new legislature, even though we have the old governor, we do have the new legislature that's been sworn in, and we already have bills introduced on Stage III childcare in CalWorks. That's AB 1, introduced by no less than the Speaker, and the Speaker's proposing to reappropriate $250 million statewide for Stage III childcare services. Extension of the VLF increment, that's very important to law enforcement, for the cops, for the juvenile justice programs, for rural law enforcement. That bill has been introduced as AB 66 by Assemblyman Chesbro. In addition to that, we are going to be working, we are working on special election reimbursements. This county is obviously one county in the state very affected by that, and we're hoping to secure that early in 2011 if possible. In addition, the legislature, we think, will be working on the transportation swap, a new version of that in light of the passage of propositions 22 and 26. Last but not least, in the Last but not least, in the short term, CSAC is going to be sponsoring legislation to allow counties to securitize payables for mandates, mandate payments from previous years that are owed to counties. And they're going to try to get that down to the governors early as they can in 2011. So all of those things combined, obviously, that's a lot for us to be working on. Longer term, I think the message we really want to give to the board today is that you have to expect proposed realignment. We saw them last year from Governor Schwarzenegger and the then legislature. You're going to see them again with the Governor-elect and the new legislature. They will be multiple. They will be significant in their scope, in the billions of dollars. We keep hearing from Democratic leadership that they want to find a way for local governments to be able to pay for the services that will be shifted. And so, heads up, everyone needs to understand that. We've yet to see a way constitutionally, legally, technically, especially after Proposition 1A, that the legislature could really do that. But that is the goal, and I think you'll see the Governor-elect and the new legislature working on that. If there are any questions, we're happy to take them right now, but otherwise, we will segue right into this special presentation that we have here for Mary Hurtigan.
Questions by board members?
I have two quick ones. You said CSAC is working on a bill where local governments would be allowed to securitize receivables. Can I expound on that a little bit?
Yeah, it would be similar in structure and actually would use the existing JPA that county, cities, and school districts were allowed to create when the last property tax shift occurred. The concept is, pre, or excuse me, up to and including 2004 mandates could be similarly securitized through that JPA, probably frankly, and this is an important point for everyone to understand, probably at around 80 to 85 cents on the dollar.
That's what I was wondering.
From what you're owed. You may or may not, that would be elective, you may or may not want to participate in that, you may or may not want to take that deal. You may want to wait another 10, 12 years and see if the state will pay you $1 for every dollar that you're owed. But that was in a bill, and yeah, well, we'll see. So it wouldn't be mandatory, it would be your choice. And that wasn't a bill, it was actually the only trailer bill that went to the Governor that was vetoed by the Governor this past year. And so CSAC and a lot of folks in local government advocacy want to try to send that back to the new Governor as quickly as possible. And if you go that road, you go that road, and if you choose not to, you don't have to.
Okay. And then, in regard to realignment, for those that don't speak the jargon, what we mean by realignment is the state government taking services that they currently provide, forcing them down to local governments without funding associated with it.
That's right.
That's what we mean by realignment.
It's a nice word for a bad thing.
Okay.
How's that?
Because realignment sounds really cool, you know? You realign your car.
Right, right. And it works better.
Yes, exactly.
Right, right. Sometimes money is provided, not always, again, dollar for dollar. We have, as long as we're doing this, especially I think for the public's benefit, we have the voters approved Proposition 1A, and that did require the legislature and the Governor to align revenues with programs, or constitutionally, counties and cities can take issue with that, and certainly have more of a legal basis than we did, say, six or seven or eight years ago. But per my previous comments, you know, I think the legislature is going to try to do what it can to be as creative as possible from their perspective. How's that? I don't want to speak in code too much, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Montgomery.
Karen, Paul, I wanted to thank you both for your report. Paul, I would ask that in the future, you refrain from the color commentary. We would like to work with our Governor-elect well, in the future.
I understood, duly noted, Supervisor.
Then again, he did earn the name Moonbeam for something. So maybe it was asked-
Yes, and if we recall, it was for a very far-sighted proposal to put communication satellites into orbit under the Aegis of the State of California. And we might not find ourselves in this budget circumstance we face had we had the foresight to act on some of those suggestions.
Maybe the astronomical reference.
Yeah, duly noted, Supervisor. Yeah. So with that, we have, hi Mary. Say hi, say hi Karen.
Hi Mary.
Just so everybody can see this, Karen referenced a bill that really was a team effort locally, as well as a lot of folks statewide that worked on the humane officer piece of legislation. You really can't tell how thick it is here as a chapered bill. But just so everybody can see, this is signed by the Secretary of the Governor, the Chief Clerk of the Assembly, the Secretary of the Senate, and it is the chapered bill, excuse me, version of the bill, and it's signed by Governor Arnold Schwarzenegger here on the back. And there aren't a lot of folks that have this Governor's autograph, but we wanted Mary to have it. But I'm not sure what side she's going to display, but we tried to make it so she could have her choice there. And so, Mary, we look forward to giving this to you, hopefully in person. Oh, okay, and we are going to give it to Shannon right now.
Can we get a picture?
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
You got it? All right. You like this? Yeah, Karen, get it in.
Come on.
All right. There you go. Yeah. All right. And with that, I think we're going to hand it over to Rich and allow you to receive a federal report.
Great, good morning, Rich. Thanks very much. Appreciate the opportunity, your board, to appear before you today and Mr. Chairman. And want to also send out good vibes to Mary, as she's watching today. I did want to start out just by giving you a little bit of rundown in terms of where we are. I can't help but start with the fact that as you face a $30 billion deficit here in the state for this fiscal year, we're looking at a $1.4 trillion deficit at the federal level. I guess proportionally, those are probably in the same neck of the woods, but obviously a lot of work to do on the federal level to bring that down. And while we don't use the word realignment at the federal level, I'm sure some of that will be happening as well. And I point that out only because as we start to take a look after the President's Deficit Reduction Commission report a few weeks ago, at looking at what the federal government ought to be doing and what it ought to be disinvesting from, without question, there are going to be those activities that at some point used to be handled by the federal government that will be finding your way down. And as you know, in the 90s, we used the words unfunded mandate a lot, and I expect to be trying to fight off some of those on behalf of Placer County and other counties at the federal level moving forward. For this year, we've been working on a number of activities for the county in Washington. Obviously wastewater treatment funding, and the Omnibus Appropriations Bill was just filed in the Senate with $1 million for wastewater for Placer County due to the efforts of Senator Feinstein and Senator Boxer. That bill will probably be considered either sometime this weekend or early next week. Technically, right now, Congress is supposed to leave Friday. We actually expect they'll probably stay in through at least next Tuesday or Wednesday to finish up both the appropriations bills, as well as potentially the President's Stark Treaty that he negotiated. We, in addition to the funding for wastewater this year, have been working on implementation of the Conservation Plan with federal agencies, as well as with the delegation, including increasing funding in the Department of Interior bill for implementation of not just Placer County's plan, but the other five counties in Northern California for grant funding, and will continue to do so. We worked with your state advocates and staff to ensure that Willerka Road Bridge would qualify for the federal bridge program. Obviously, that's an effort that has been championed by Supervisor Rockholm, as well as Supervisor Santucci before him. And we're glad that we see a light at the end of the tunnel, and we're 90% sure it's not a train. Although with both the feds and state highway, we'll confirm that before we finalize. We are also starting to work with the Healthcare Department as the federal healthcare law gets implemented. There are a lot of grant funds out there that will help, hopefully, defer some of what you're experiencing in terms of cuts at the local levels, as well as in implementation of the program. And we're in regular discussions with your staff on that issue now. We're also working on your biomass plant initiative. You're one of three ongoing plant sightings in the state of California. This is a major priority for Senator Feinstein, and we're working closely with her, not only from the funding perspective, but also to ensure that federal regulatory efforts that the Environmental Protection Agency, as well as legislation on energy development on Capitol Hill reflect the needs of that facility going forward. So those are a few of the types of things we've been working on, and I can obviously answer questions on any specifics with regard to last year's federal platform, or I guess this year's federal platform. Also, do want to mention going forward, some of the priorities that Congress will be focused on as you all consider a platform for next year at your next meeting. The transportation reauthorization bill will be up. Obviously, in the past, the county has worked very hard and done a lot of great work to achieve infrastructure funding in that bill for things like I-80 widening in the last bill, as well as back when I started working with the county, Forest Hill Road straightening. And there will be a number of priorities I'm sure that you all will have for that bill, and we look forward to helping out on that going forward. In addition, obviously, the big effort in Congress next year will be to try and get some kind of bipartisan agreement on deficit reduction. And there obviously will be programs there that will receive cuts in funding, we'll be watching out again for unfunded mandates, but there will also be programs, including in the transportation space, that will increase federal resources, and we'll want to watch out for those for opportunities for you all. Lastly, I think energy is going to be a big focus going forward. As I mentioned, obviously, with your interest in biomass, you really are a real focus for Senator Feinstein in that arena, and we look forward to continuing to focus on that for you with the energy legislation moving forward in the next Congress. So that's my report, and obviously can answer questions.
Supervisor Holmes.
Oh, thank you, Rich. I just wanted to, you may be aware that the Bureau of Reclamation is having a funding shortfall for our Auburn State Recreation Area. And we will be, I think Supervisor Wigan and I will be coming back in February, and we'll bring you more information about that. But it's very important for us to keep that area open, and we're actually looking for a national recreation area. I know that's going to be a tremendous challenge, but we do need to find a way to provide more funding federally for that.
One thing I'd mention, as you all are aware, Senator Feinstein obviously is on the Appropriations Committee. Senator Boxer chairs the Environment and Public Works Committee. They both have significant influence over the Bureau of Reclamation, and I think that's an area where they can be helpful, and we'll certainly staff that out. I'm hoping in addition to Mary Hurtigan watching today, my colleague Mike Colano, who has just made a partner at our firm, is also watching and taking notes on this. So Mike, you got that one?
All right, great, thank you.
Are there questions or comments for Rich? Okay, well, this is just the board receiving a report on our legislative platform, both state and nationally. We're not being asked to take any action, but if there's any member of the public that wishes to address the board on the report we just received, go ahead and take that now. Okay, seeing none, we do have an action item in regard to our contract with our various lobbying representation for the next year. And that is, where did I move off to? I'm 12B. Yes, I'm 12B. Allison, is there anything you need to add before our board acts?
There's nothing I need to add. It would be item 12AB on the agenda.
12A was just to receive the report, so 12-
It is 12A.
Oh, 12A, thank you. 12A sub B, thank you. Sorry, yes. Supervisor Holmes offered a motion, Supervisor Rockholm has seconded. Any comments by board members saying no, no, favorably say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. And item 12B, we've already taken, so we don't have to deal with that again. Thank you. We will go ahead and move to our 11:30 timed item. This is the A Facility Services item in regard to a Bruin Ranch Conservation Easement acquisition. Mary is here to do the heavy lifting on behalf of the department. And if it involves a warrant, it is heavy lifting indeed.
I brought in the big help here for me. Chairman, members of the board, Mary Dietrich, Facility Services. With me today is Lauren Clark from the Community Development Resource Agency. And the purpose of this item is to request your board's consideration of a recommendation from staff to approve the acquisition of a conservation easement over 1,700 acres of the Bruin Ranch from the Trust for Public Lands, and including an irrevocable offer of dedication for a conservation easement over 427 acres of the Dottie Ravine Preserve owned by the Placer Land Trust. This presentation, Facility Services, I will be presenting the transactional aspects of this request, and Lauren will be presenting the information relative to the county's conservation efforts and the PCCP. The locations of the property, Bruin Ranch is located west of Highway 49, along the Bear River in the Auburn Valley Big Hill area of Placer County. And the Dottie Ravine Preserve is located east of State Route 65, along Dottie Ravine between Sheridan and Lincoln. The Trust for Public Land, working in cooperation with the Placer Land Trust, has developed and agreed, entered into an agreement of purchase and sale to acquire the fee title interest in a portion of the property known as the Bruin Ranch, which is owned by Harvego Real Estate LLC. Because of the proximity of this property to the Hidden Falls Regional Park, and because of the significant biological resources that are present on this property, and the county's efforts relative to the PCCP, the land trust has approached the county with regard to acquiring the conservation easements. In addition, the Trust for Public Land has offered to sell the county a conservation easement over the Dottie Ravine property, which also has significant biological resources. Ultimately, the Placer Land Trust has agreed to take fee title to the property should this acquisition be completed. To effect the transaction, it's requested that your board delegate a authority to the Director of Facility Services for a number of transactions. Those include a purchase and sale agreement, and embedded as deliverables in those documents are conservation easement for the Bruin Ranch, an assignment of easements for the Bruin Ranch, as well as the irrevocable offer of dedication over the Dottie property. Material terms relative to this transaction include a purchase price of $5 million and a close of escrow on and before December 31st, 2010. Specifically, the Bruin Ranch Conservation Easement will preserve and protect the property in perpetuity. It will provide for the public's use of the property. It should be noted, though, that this is not intended to occur immediately. It's anticipated that following the development of a management plan and a trail plan by the county and the Placer Land Trust, that at that point in time, the property would be available for more generalized public use, similar to what we see on the Hidden Falls property. Additionally, the county will have the right to prevent activities that are inconsistent with property conservation values that we've preserved. The conservation easement will transfer the development rights to the county. It will ensure the right to place a habitat conservation easement over the property following the adoption of the PCCP. And this is really important in that that has higher obligations relative to habitat management and monitoring, and our ability to place that conversation, conservation easement over the property later on will allow us to defer costs that can be borne by that program at a later date. And lastly, the conservation easement will provide access that is, to the property that's enjoyed by the property owner. It conveys incredible connectivity to other properties that are conveyed in the county, amounting to approximately 4,600 acres. And it supports other properties in this region that already have granted trail access use. We also have the potential to provide connectivity to 2,700 acres that are currently proposed for conservation in Nevada County. So this really creates a really important regional connectivity property. The Dottie Ravine Preserve Conservation Easement will allow and reserve the right to protect the property also in perpetuity when the PCCP is approved. And you'll note that this is an irrevocable offer of dedication, and the county's proposal is that we would only accept that offer following the acceptance of your board by the PCCP. It allows us to enter and enforce the compliance consistent with the PCCP reserve management requirements, and to preserve rights that are consistent with the objectives. There are no rights of access for the public over this particular piece of property. From a cost and funding perspective- From a cost and funding perspective, the fee title to the 1,700 acres of the Bruin Ranch cost is $9,500,000. The Wildlife Conservation Board has approved a grant to the Placer Land Trust in the amount of $4,500,000 for this acquisition, and truly, it's in support of the effort that Placer County has in pursuing sustainable wildlife protection through our conservation efforts and our PCCP activities that have been ongoing for many years. The acquisition cost to the county for a conservation easement over the property and including the offer of dedication over the Dottie Ravine Preserve is a cost of $5 million. That equates to a cost of $2,820 per acre. In our experience, that's an excellent value. Typically, with the amount of rights that the county has reserved, including the development rights, it usually pairs a fee value to the property. So at half the cost, it's an excellent value to the county, and taking into consideration the PCCP values that come forward with this as well. It is really a significant opportunity. The county sources of funding for the acquisition include $4 million from the Placer County's Open Space Fund and $1 million from the Placer County Tree Fund. Should be noted that these sources of revenues were allocated by the board in previous fiscal years and set aside for one-time conservation expenditures. Additionally, the cost for the ongoing maintenance of the property will be roughly estimated to be about $1,000 a year. This will be incorporated into the planning division's operations cost and part of their ongoing monitoring that they do of other conservation easements that we have in the county.
Thank you, Mary. Lauren Clark with the Planning Department and CDRA. A lot of the discussion that centers around this property centers on the idea of the Placer County Conservation Plan coming into existence a couple of years from now, and it'd be a plan that would be in place for approximately 50 years. The intent behind the PCCP is to mitigate for growth. It's to balance growth with conservation and, to some extent, mitigation or replacement of those things that are lost as a consequence of growth. When you look at Western Placer County, which is the emphasis on the PCCP right now, we find about 51,000 acres of land will convert over the next 50 years. Of that 51,000 acres, right around 6,000 acres consists of the blue oak woodlands that we see as we drive up Interstate 80 today or drive out Highway 193 towards Lincoln. That landscape will convert, it will fragment, it will change over the next 50 years. The PCCP's intent is to mitigate for that effect, and both Bruin Ranch, to a great extent, because it is predominantly oak woodland and Dottie Ravine for different reasons, which I'll explain, we believe are very important to the PCCP. When you look at the landscape of Western Placer County, the figure to my left, the pale yellow, is where growth is likely to take place over the next 50 years. The areas in gray are cities that are not participating in the development of the PCCP. And the area in green is the area within which you would build a reserve system. And what you find is both the Bruin Ranch in the upper right-hand corner is within the reserve acquisition area, and that the Hoffman Ranch or the Dottie Ravine Preserve, as it's now known, is also located within that area on a key watershed, Dottie Ravine as part of Coon Creek. Bruin Ranch has no conservation status today. The Dottie Ravine Preserve is owned by Placer Land Trust and does have a deed restriction placed on it. When you look more closely at the resources that are on these properties, you find that they contain all of the essential elements of what we are trying to protect within that PCCP reserve system. In the case of Bruin Ranch, it's 1,773 acres, predominantly oak woodland. It's also one of the very few areas of the county in the western county today where we have a chance to protect a river, in this case, approximately three miles of the riverine habitat along the Bear River. Probably the westernmost small patch of incense cedar, it's actually incense cedar grove on this property, as well as some other coniferous forests, but by and large, it is a hardwood forest with a lot of narrow intermittent streams with some associated riparian habitat, the very thing that is being impacted elsewhere when we see growth over the next 50 years. When you look at the reserve system itself, and what we're trying to accomplish is oak woodland conservation pursuant to state law. There's a requirement in the California Environmental Quality Act that calls counties within the state of California to conserve oak woodlands. We're also mitigating for endangered species. That's the primary reason why we are preparing plans like the PCCP. The habitat that is present here covers some of the activities that are occurring elsewhere by setting aside important properties within that reserve area. It's also one of the very few areas, not only here in Placer County, but throughout the Sierra Nevadas, where we have valley floor to foothill to Sierra Nevada connectivity along a major river watershed, which is the case that we find with the Bear River. And then lastly, there's other connectivity, as Mary mentioned, in the sense of trail connectivity. There's connectivity on this map to other areas in green, which are already protected today. It's building on an existing reserve system and making it larger and more viable over time. When you look at the Dottie Ravine Preserve, as I mentioned, it already has some level of protection. It is owned by Placer Land Trust, it does have a deed restriction on it. The primary objective of the county in this instance is to provide a greater level of protection on the property, primarily the resources there that are so critical to the PCCP are brownie pool habitat. It's in, within a federally designated critical habitat area, brownie pools are present, endangered species associated with that habitat is very important to, the protection of those species is very important to the success of the PCCP. What we have in the case of Dottie Ravine is the opportunity to set this aside before the impacts occur, and there's this opportunity of claiming credit, which I'll touch on in a second. When you focus in closely on Dottie Ravine, you see on a relatively small parcel, 400 and some acres, a cross-section of all of the important resources that we find in the valley floor of Placer County. Valley foothill riparian, very scarce. Valley oak woodland, very scarce. Brownie pool habitat harboring endangered species, increasingly scarce. Swanson's hawk foraging area, as well as nesting area. A lot of things happening on this one parcel. This is an opportunity to see it go into greater conservation. And as I mentioned, there's a lot of discussion of credit. What is creditable? How can we apply for credit? In the case of the PCCP, all the good deeds that we do now during the development of this work program, we have an agreement with the state and federal agencies that says when we finish the plan, all of that work, we can put a claim in for credit. So all the things that we've done in Placer County through the Placer Legacy Program, for example, where we've set aside land such as Hidden Falls, when the PCCP is done, we can write into the plan that we have already set aside these areas, and we get to apply them to our obligation over time. Bruin Ranch, Dottie Ravine Preserve are both very critical in the sense that we have land in advance of the impact, which is a requirement of the plan. And in the case of Dottie Ravine, it's something called jumpstart, where on year one of the plan, you actually have to have land set aside before the impact occurs, about 2% of your total obligation. So in both instances, we get to claim this credit when the PCCP is done. For oak woodlands, we will have substantial credit. For Dottie Ravine, we will have the right amount to start, and we won't be lagging behind on day one, which is so often a problem with these work programs. And then lastly, there's a lot of things that happen in this region. We don't do this alone. We obviously do this with partners. One of the key partners in this case is the Department of Fish and Game and the Wildlife Conservation Board. Trust for Public Land and Department of Fish and Game, a number of years ago, prepared and expanded something called the Spenceville Conceptual Area Protection Plan. It's an acknowledgement by the state of California that this area of the western slope of the Sierra Nevada is important, it contains key resources, oak woodlands and streams, that are worthy of protection and a high priority for the state. As a consequence of that, the area's been pre-qualified for state funding, and thus we saw the Wildlife Conservation Board's willingness to put four and a half million dollars into this project.
And with that, I'll turn it back to Mary.
Thank you. The specific actions requested of your board today are to delegate authority to the Director of Facility Services to execute an agreement of purchase and sale in an amount not to exceed $5 million for the acquisition of the conservation easement on Bruin Ranch and the irrevocable offer of dedication for conservation easement over Dottie Ravine. We're asking that you adopt a resolution authorizing the Director of Facility Services to take all of the actions necessary to complete this transaction, escrow documents, et cetera, that you approve in a budget revision, placing the available funding into an account so that it can be dispersed through escra, that you find that the proposed acquisitions are categorically exempt from SEQA, and that you approve these properties, and in the case of the Dottie Ravine property, once the irrevocable offer of dedication is accepted, that you accept, authorize these to be added to the county's master fixed asset list.
In closing, on behalf of staff, we certainly want to thank the board's appreciation and willingness to consider this acquisition today. We also need to acknowledge the tremendous involvement of a series of partners, many of which have been involved in acquisitions like this and working with Placer County for really just about a decade now, since Placer Legacy, for example, came into existence in June of 2000. The Placer Land Trust has been a key partner in not only this acquisition, but other acquisitions, as well as the Trust for Public Land. They have brought this deal forward to the county and worked very, very hard on the negotiations. The Wildlife Conservation Board, obviously, for their commitment to four and a half million dollars in funding, which goes back to a handshake right around 2002 or 2003 when they promised us those dollars, and they've actually followed through on that with this particular acquisition. State Department of Fish and Game, not only for the PCCP, but for their support for that acquisition by the Wildlife Conservation Board, and then obviously the Harvigo family themselves. I believe a representative of the family is here today. It was obviously their willingness to bring this property forward and see it go into conservation status is the reason why we have an opportunity to talk about it today. So with that, I'll close, and I believe we're available for questions.
Board members have any questions? Staff at this time, before we open up the public hearing. Supervisor Montgomery.
I just had a couple of clarifying questions. Mary, when was the date of appraisal? Our packet says October 28 of 2009. Is that-
That's correct.
Okay. I just ask because there was a lot of speculation in the commenters in the Auburn Journal online that this was an old appraisal based on property values from, oh, say, 2006. So this is a fairly current appraisal that does reflect the more current valuations of property in Placer County?
Yes, I think that's correct to say. These transactions take a long time, and one of the fundamental things and the first early things you do is that appraisal, but 2009 is the date.
Okay. And you mentioned connectivity. And I don't know, Lauren, can you go back to one of the slides that shows the, I'll tell you when, right there. So there's the Bruin Ranch property, which is the stripy bit, and then below that, I believe, is Big Hill. What is the connectivity between Big Hill and Bruin Ranch?
There's actually another slide that we'll direct you to that shows this, I think, a little bit better. The properties that are purple, blue, and red are, those are Placer Land Trust-owned properties. On the Bruin Ranch that is not shaded in green, you can see a light dashed purple line. That represents two things. One is a connection from the Liberty Ranch property, which is the purple property, and then the line running east-west is a ranch road over which there will be a public road and trail easement granted to the county. So that will allow connectivity from Hidden Falls to the north, and then ultimately easterly to the Phase One property. Not shown on these properties are the ranch roads that exist on the Phase One property that are also available to the county, subject to the development of the management plan and trail plan that would be used for trail purposes.
Okay, and I really, I'm glad you pointed that out because the connectivity was not clear in some of the other slides. The issue of public access has also come up from the public, and my understanding, if I heard you both correctly, is that there will be an interim period during which time management plans for Bruin Ranch, if acquired, will be put into place. Those management plans will or will not include public access?
The management plan and the conservation easement that we are going to secure, secures the right for the public to use this property. So that is part and parcel of what we are acquiring. There's a question of access to the property, and there are some issues relative to that over Auburn Valley Road that we will be working on in the upcoming timeframe. And we hope to be able to develop and deliver that access to the property over time. But regardless, the county would secure rights for public use of that property, part and parcel with this easement.
So public access is part of this proposed agreement?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Wigan.
Just to highlight, probably obvious to everyone, but Jennifer's comment about the appraisal, 2009 is after the market crash in 2008, so it wasn't before that time. So I read some of those articles myself. And then another comment, could you articulate, for management purposes, we're going to have to continue farming out there, so it's not a piece of property that's going to be taken off the egg rolls, if you will, for habitat values, as well as fuel load maintenance reduction. You might want to comment on that a bit.
Yeah, much the list of activities that are allowed on the property are activities that you would consider agriculture. So, for example, grazing is specifically allowed as both an opportunity to raise revenue to help stewardship costs on the property, but also because it's been productive agricultural land in the past, and we anticipate that it would remain so in the future. That is the dominant agriculture use that's been on that property, and that is what we anticipate as well into the future, not a significant change in that activity.
Tom, do you have some-
Yes, if I might, I just want to clarify some things on public access and the county's ownership of this property. County is not going to be the fee owner. County is securing conservation easements and some rights of public access. We, and it's clear by our environmental clearance here, are just looking to acquire this for open space purposes, not these actions, not for any development plan of the overall facility.
That's a new one on me.
Yeah. So the county has no plans to provide for public access here. We're securing some rights that should the Trust for Public Lands or others want to provide for public access in the future, they may be able to do so. And so that is, needs to be, I think, stated here, that we are not developing public access. We have no plans to provide for public access, but we're securing rights that public access can be provided by others in the future and work to work with whoever does that.
Should we evacuate?
We're not sure we're on time.
Urban renewal. Lauren, we have, going back to the adoption of our general plan update as a county in 1994, we've had a policy that new growth has to pay for its way, pay for its impacts. Yet on the surface, it looks like the county is actually paying for mitigation for future development. Would you address that discrepancy?
There is a standard within the general plan that new growth has to pay for its way for new facilities and services, and then we develop fee programs, capital improvement programs, et cetera, to account for that. As it relates to an acquisition on this property, 20% of the funding comes out of the tree mitigation fund. So at least that portion of the funding, we're actually mitigating for impacts that have already occurred, and obviously buying down that cost after the fact. As it relates to the balance of the funding, the open space trust fund, there are both mitigation and conservation requirements of the PCCP. Conservation requirements, you are not replacing something that is lost because you've had an impact. You are building a landscaped reserve acquisition area within which you would manage some 51, 52,000 acres over time in some type of conservation status. We have the flexibility, we haven't written exactly what credit we want to claim, but we have the flexibility to apply Bruin Ranch to our conservation requirements of the PCCP. Thus, you would not be using open space trust fund dollars to mitigate somebody else's impact. We also have the ability to use this contribution to mitigate our own impacts for the county public works projects and other projects sponsored by Placer County. That is a choice that we haven't tied our hands yet. It's a choice we can make as the PCCP develops over time. So it's credit, but it isn't necessarily credit to buy down somebody else's cost. That is an important distinction. The PCCP will have a fee program. People will have to pay into the fee program to pay for their own particular impacts.
And conceivably, if we have, we have secured this conservation, and conceivably, we don't need it for our own impacts, we can actually, at some point in the future, be in the market as a seller of the credit to somebody incurring an impact.
Certainly, another option is actually, if we elect to use it for mitigation, is the county can be paid back for those- the county can be paid back for those costs at whatever the fair market rate is at the time that that credit is needed.
Correct. Yes. And the staff is requesting the allocation of $4 million in open space funds to the canceling of existing reserves that have been built up. I think it's important to note that during the good times, this board did set aside dollars specifically for this purpose, and that over the past few years, we have phased that out with no general fund contribution to open space last year, no general fund contribution to open space this year, and a much smaller contribution a few years ago prior to these having been built up. So we are not taking dollars that are existing within our general fund, but dollars that previous boards had set aside for just this kind of an opportunity for us to take advantage of. Any other questions or comments by board members? Seeing none, while this is not a notice public hearing, I know there's a little bit of public interest in this item, and so we'll go ahead and open this up to any members of the public who wish to address the board on this item at this time. Please identify yourself and try to limit your comments to three minutes if you may.
Greetings, Chairman. Members of the board. James Navicki with the California Department of Fish and Game. Have been the staff person assigned to the Placer County Conservation Plan for the last few years. I'd just like to take a moment to express the Department of Fish and Game's support for the Bruin Ranch acquisitions. This is a critical piece of property located in a very important area adjacent to Nevada County, where there are other preserved lands, and it provides a substantial portion of the get-ahead, stay-ahead provisions of the end development PCCP. So I just want to express that support. As Lauren pointed out in his presentation, that this parcel is located within what we call a conceptual area protection plan. The Department of Fish and Game has identified this entire area as being critical for the preservation of blue oak woodlands and the animals that depend on those habitats. But more so, what I'd like to do is share with you the department and the state of California's firm commitment for the PCCP. You know, our contribution of $4.5 million to this acquisition is a substantial contribution, and it represents our firm commitment to seeing this process through to the end. But I'd also like to further emphasize the partnership that the Department of Fish and Game and Placer County has developed with the development of the PCCP as a shining example of what can be done with respect to responsible planning. And so I just want to commend Lauren and the board for your commitment to this plan. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, James. Anybody else wish to address the board?
Good afternoon.
Yes.
My name is Jessica Pearson. I'm the Assistant Director for Placer Land Trust. And on behalf of my board of directors, our supporters, many of which are in this room, and neighbors to the Bruin Ranch, we'd like to thank you for the opportunity to present this to the board. And I wanted to say thank you for your attention to this item, as well as I wanted to commend your staff for their work with us in this partnership. It's been tremendous to work with them, and they're a real tremendous asset to Placer County. We believe that there is no single more important property to protect in Placer County than Bruin Ranch. And we feel, as Supervisor Yuler pointed out, that the time is now really to make this effort happen with the price per acre that we're getting and the value. We also feel that Placer Land Trust, Trust for Public Land, and Placer County staff have really created a win-win solution and strategy to make this happen. A shining example of that is the IOD for Doty Ravine Preserve, to satisfy the requirements in the PCCP for the stay-ahead provision, and also to provide a greater level of protection for Doty Ravine. So with that, I just want to say thank you again, and we're encouraging you guys to recommend the staff recommendations and vote yes. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sally Sue Stein. My parents brought me up here in 1966. I've owned property since 1983, my husband and I, next to the Bruin Ranch, right next door to the Liberty Ranch Preserve. So I'm in favor, I want to say that I'm in favor of you passing this. I also was the founder of Gold Country Wildlife Rescue. As the president of that organization for a long time and a rehabber for Fish and Game for a long time, drives me crazy when I see the loss of habitat for our wildlife. We can rehab till we're blue in the face, but if we don't have any place safe to release these animals, doesn't do any good. So the more land we can preserve, as far as I'm concerned, the better. Now, my neighbors call me all the time and say, Sally Sue, your deer are eating my roses. What do I do? And my answer to them is move back to LA. But that's probably not politically correct, I understand, but I'm for preservation of the land. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the board? Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. Dan Makin, live here in Auburn, and I am currently in the fourth year of being the grazing tenant on the Doty Ravine Preserve. And I am here also to thank you for your consideration of this and to reiterate what Supervisor Weigant said about the balance on both of these properties between continued agricultural use and habitat conservation. I think that's a really critical component to both of these projects that shouldn't be overlooked. And just one additional thing to add about Doty Ravine, any of you that have driven Gliding Road know that there is public access onto Doty Ravine, usually when it rains at night through the fence. That being said, I would encourage you to accept staff recommendations on both these projects. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to address the board on this item prior to us taking action? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and bring this back to the board for motion, and by Supervisor Rockholm, and a second by Supervisor Montgomery. Supervisor Weigant, comments on the motion?
Yeah, I could just make a couple of comments. Such a, I think it's an historic moment connected to one that I hope we'll see soon within a couple of years when we sign an agreement with the regulatory agencies approving the conservation plan, and this takes us a huge distance towards that. But it's consistent with a long-term vision of the county to do something different in terms of planning as compared to Sacramento County, for example, but acknowledging our rich heritage in the rural perspective and the habitat values that we all enjoy. And just want to thank all of the partners. Whoever Jessica was able to get the letter that concurred on the conservation quality and value to the county on the Doty property, I give them huge accolades. But it's also historic in the sense that we've developed now some great partnerships with folks like the Trust for Placer Land, Trust for Public Lands, thank you, the Placer Land Trust, Department of Fish and Game. And we're, you know, we've emerged into this new era where these kinds of transactions press with completion of the conservation plan. I think 100 years from now, when people look back, they're going to be very pleased with some of the decisions that we've made. So obviously encourage us all to vote for this.
Thank you. Supervisor Montgomery.
Yeah, I want to echo Supervisor Weigant's comments. There is no question that this is a lot of money that we're being asked to spend today. But the time is absolutely right in terms of pricing. This is a good deal for Placer County, both short-term and long-term. And when I say for Placer County, I mean for everybody in Placer County. I mean for the development community, because once the PCCP is adopted, it will give some certainty to the development community as to where they can and cannot expect to develop. Furthermore, I think the acquisition of this property, or I should say, the allocation of the funds to acquire this property, plays in exactly to the vote that we took in which we chose to include District 5 back into the PCCP after it had been removed. I think that years from now, when our children and our grandchildren and their children look back on the choices that we made, as difficult as they are ethically, socially, and economically, they're going to thank us that we have left them open space for the public to recreate in rather than a string of empty strip malls. So thank you for all your work on this. It's been a lot of time and effort and energy put to this, I know, by both your departments and your staffs, and I thank you deeply for that.
My only concern with this particular item is the item, is around access. I am very supportive of, obviously, the work we've been doing on the PCCP, otherwise I wouldn't have spent the last four years tied up in meetings on it. And it is with the commitment of our partners that ultimately the goal for this piece is to be able to provide suitable public access by way of vehicle to the property, and that we will work together cooperatively to secure whatever easements are going to be needed, and then working on financing of the facilities that would be necessary to create adequate staging for pedestrian, bicycle, equestrian, like we have at Hidden Falls. It's with that assurance that I'm comfortable in moving forward with this right now because the opportunity is a tremendous one for us, and we'd be remiss in passing it up. So, Robert, do you have anything else you want to add?
I just echo that, Kirk, and I'm confident, too, that we'll be able to resolve that with the partnerships that we've made. It makes me think back early years of a lot of this. Habitat values oftentimes were set aside exclusive of public access.
Right.
One of the best ways, perhaps the only way, to guarantee that we actually do preserve those habitat values in an intelligent and biologically intelligent way is to make sure there is public enjoyment of all of that and education that goes along with it. And I just would highlight that by, there's this notion about no public access to the Doty property, and I don't know if that's explicitly true. I know other foundations, like the Wildlife Heritage Foundation, for example, on conservation easements, the Dead Holes actually takes school kids out to their vernal pool preserves. And I know that Placer Land Trust does similar kinds of things. I'm not certain if they do that on this property, but it's all a big part of this bigger recipe that has emerged, and I'm confident, I think your comments, Kirk, are well taken, and I'm just very confident we'll do much more than that.
All right. Seeing no other comments, as this does require budget revision, a roll call is necessary. So the court will call the roll, please.
Rockholm?
Yes.
Weigant?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Yuler?
Aye.
Counsel, have something you want to add?
Yeah, I would like to make sure that the board knows that on page six, under your closed session items, we had tentatively scheduled, out of a nervous reaction that only lawyers have, that in case something didn't quite work out, we were going to have to revisit this in closed session. So I want to announce that we will not be discussing this in closed session because there's no further need and that lawyers no longer have a nervous reaction.
Amen. Thank you. We'll pause one quick minute, my folks. So, I want to get that. I have to move. All right. So, we will continue our items with Department Head, item number 14. Emergency Services Hazardous Vegetation Abatement. And Roy.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. For the record, my name is Roy Cunha. I'm the Program Manager for the Office of Emergency Services. At your Board's direction and in full coordination with the professional fire organizations in the unincorporated county, I'm bringing this forward item and both my office and Chief Harris are recommending an expansion of the hazardous vegetation abatement ordinance to include the Placer County Fire, Forest Hill, Penrin, and Loomis Fire Protection District areas. This would not omit the eastern fire protection districts that are already participants in the ordinance. So that area would encompass the area that you see in yellow, as well as Forest Hill, as well as Penrin and Loomis. Not included are Placer Hills Fire Protection District area, Newcastle, as well as the South Placer Fire Protection District areas. All three of those districts asked to observe the ordinance for a year and observe its implementation through that year and would like to make a further determination at that point. Specifically, the action requested is that your Board approve an ordinance amending Chapter Nine, Article 9.32, Part Four, the hazardous vegetation abatement on unimproved parcels by adding the newly participating agencies, as I just mentioned. And then additionally, as your Board is the governing Board for Placer County Fire, approve Placer County Fire's participation in the ordinance. Just as a brief reminder of the functions of the ordinance, not just for the Board, but primarily for the public, what the hazardous vegetation abatement ordinance does is extends State Public Resources Code 4291, which is the defensible space ordinance, by creating a tool that is applied specifically to unimproved properties that are adjacent to improved properties where an extra hazardous fire condition exists, as determined by a fire professional, and improved property is significantly at risk due to the untreated fuel conditions. Those are the main purposes of the ordinance and what it is supposed to do. The ordinance prescribes a process which starts by inspection and then moves to a cooperative process where fire professionals work with property owners to obtain compliance. Failing a cooperative process, then there is a formal notification that is required of the professional fire service. With that notification, again, assuming no action on the part of a property owner, then a compulsory abatement on that property could be ordered, again, assuming that nothing has happened. That compulsory abatement would be funded through a fund that your Board has set aside for this purpose and that fund would be recovered through a property tax lien that would be placed on that property where there would not have been any action taken. So that's a general reminder of the hazardous vegetation abatement ordinance. The primary change that we're looking at today in the ordinance exists in that expansion and the expansion to those areas that I mentioned. Subject to any questions that you might have, that concludes my formal presentation.
Supervisor Holmes.
Roy, you probably know, I've always been concerned about the Christian Valley area. This is just a state responsibility area, so they're going to be, that area will not have anything to do with the hazardous vegetation ordinance. We have no ability to provide service to them. Although we do.
The majority of Christian Valley is the responsibility of Placer County Fire and as a result, the majority of that area would in fact be covered by this ordinance.
Okay. Other questions? Jennifer?
Yeah, Roy, you and I had a discussion a little bit earlier that I just wanted to follow up on. There were a number of concerns raised by the public about how comprehensive this is and, you know, is it going to be a total wasteland for every unimproved parcel in the county and, you know, really what are the parameters of it? And the issues that were raised really were two. One was, you know, this idea that there's just going to be, people are going to go in, they're going to take every strip of vegetation and greenery off the piece of property and there'll be nothing there and there'll be huge erosion control problems and all of that. The second piece was concerns about wildlife. You know, say someone has a lot of wildlife living on their property and they want to nourish and protect the wildlife. How does this affect, how does this affect both those questions?
The, I appreciate the question Supervisor Montgomery. This ordinance is centric to the improved, improvement on an improved parcel. In other words, the center spot for 100 feet of defensible space is that improvement. This ordinance deals only with that portion of that 100 feet of defensible space that is beyond the improved property's property line. With a 30-foot setback, as an example, we would see 70 feet of area that in fact would be subject to this ordinance. And the fuel reduction required within that 70 feet is consistent with that that exists in Public Resource Code 4291, in which case that portion of the fuel is the primary intent of dealing with those fuels is to reduce ladder fuels within that area, which includes trimming grass as well as limbing up of the trees. It is not blanket tree removal, it is not blanket brush removal even, but the intent is to break up any brush fields that might exist. There are properties out there, and we've both seen them, where the adjacent property is completely man-to-manita and you couldn't get through it if you wanted to. The intent's clearly to break up some of that hazardous fuel in that particular case and again, centric to that improvement that exists on the adjacent improved property. The intent's to provide that property owner with the opportunity to have defensible space.
Okay, thank you. So, in other words, if I understood what you just said, let's just say Bruin Ranch, they're not going to be required to go in and clear everything on Bruin Ranch. It would just be anything on Bruin Ranch that was within 100 feet of a structure on an improved property.
That's correct.
Okay. Another question that has been raised is, how effective has this been in the basin? My perspective, being married to a basin firefighter, is that it's actually been very effective and that's exactly why we're proposing to move this model forward. Can you comment on that?
The fortunate thing is that we haven't had a fire test us since the time that we approved this hazardous vegetation abatement ordinance. Your Board approved the hazardous vegetation abatement ordinance in October 2007, so we haven't had that fire test, if you will. What we have seen, or at least has been reported to me by the fire entities, is that it has raised the thought process of defensible space and on unimproved parcels, it has made it very clear that there is a responsibility that those property owners have to their neighbors to ensure that there is an opportunity for defensible space on those properties. As a result, there has not been any use of the lien process for the last couple of years because the fact that the ordinance is there and quite frankly, has a pretty significant stick in that the county can order an abatement. We've seen compliance with the ordinance as a rule for the last couple of years.
Okay. And then just two very quick things. Section Two of this says unimproved parcels adjacent to roadways. So this piece of this would address, say, the 49 Fire Incident where it started right next to a roadway where there was a lot of grass and brush that had not been cleared. So this would require the 100 feet from the road or what would be the specific on that?
No, the requirement as it relates to roadways is 15 feet and so that is the actual requirement. And it's very important that it's not all roadways, it's very important that it is fire access roadways or those roadways designated as evacuation routes. So it's, so there, again, it's very important that the professional fire service be involved in this process. The ordinance is not intended to protect land for land's sake, it's intended to, in fact, improve public safety related to fuels and fuel reduction.
Okay. And then my last question is 9.32190, Hazardous Vegetation Abatement Hearing Body. There are apparently two citizens-at-large who would be appointed to this. I would suggest that when we look at appointing some of those citizens-at-large, we look at some of the people who have addressed concerns about areas for animals, sanctuary areas, just to make sure that those concerns do get heard. It does state specifically that the Hazardous Vegetation Abatement Hearing Body shall have the authority to amend, dismiss, or uphold the notice to abate with a majority vote. So, you know, that gives a little bit more of an oversight to those areas where there may be some concerns about erosion or protection of maybe endangered species that are nesting or living in some of that overgrown habitat.
Understood.
Okay, thank you.
Yes ma'am.
Other questions, Roy? Any member of the public wish to address the Board on this ordinance?
I'm Fran Keough. I would like the Board to seriously consider moving forward with this. I was a homeowner that lost my home last year, a year ago. We moved home in April and I have, we live in the North Park subdivision and we live right next to the field by the airport that is unimproved and we have several homes that come up against that field. After a devastating fire, our neighborhood had to pull together to work with that landowner to try and get a fire break created because we had no help at all. The field was overgrown tremendously. We couldn't get any help because everybody's hands were tied. There wasn't a structure on the field, so therefore he had no requirements, however we as homeowners did. So I would just like you to know from a personal position, the heartache of losing everything that you have and then having to fight to get some grass cut down seems rather ridiculous to me. So I would like for you to really consider moving this forward, let's all work together. I've heard a lot this morning, sitting here, listening to everything, we're talking about conserving land, we're talking about conserving animals and for all of that, I'm here to conserve human beings. We had people living there next to the field that were in wheelchairs, that had a hard time getting out. I don't want to see that happen again. So, please, make something happen that will make people feel safe again. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the Board on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll go back to the Board.
Second.
Motion by Rockholm, second by Holmes. Approve item 14A, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none? Thank you very much. Moving on to 14B.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Again, Roy Cunha, Program Manager, Office of Emergency Services. This item asks that your Board adopt by resolution the revised Placer County and Placer Operational Area Emergency Operations Plan and authorize the Chairman to sign the letter of promulgation associated with the plan. This plan fully conforms with both federal, state, and county requirements as an emergency operations plan. I think the most important things for the Boards to understand about the county's emergency operations plan is that it assigns specific coordinating functions to the various county staff who ultimately are responsible for integrating and coordinating the employment of county resources at the time of an emergency. This plan, our first cut at this plan was in 2004. The plan has served us very well in terms of our ability to train to these functions as well as exercise and then has served us very well through a number of emergencies between 2004 and present. We fully anticipate that the plan will do the same thing going forward. It is the one emergency plan that we're required as a county to maintain and again, as it relates to the employment of county resources at the time of an emergency, it does lay the groundwork for those specific functions. This plan has been fully coordinated with all of the departments in the county as well as all of our cities and our professional fire services as well as law enforcement as they're the recipient of our actions when we function as an operational area and then when we function in the emergency operations center. So their view of how the plan comes together and how we will function as a county is very important and its documentation is very important. In addition to the basic plan, you'll notice that in some of the annexes, there are a number of incident-specific types of documentation there. Not all incidents are covered, but not all incidents are necessary to be covered because we cover them with other plans and don't necessarily have to include them in the emergency operations plan. So subject to any questions that you might have, that concludes my formal presentation on the emergency operations plan.
Questions, Roy? Any members of the public wish to address the Board on this item, priorities taking action? Okay, we have the Pledge of the Board.
Second.
Motion, Rockholm, second, Holmes. Approve item 14B, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, Roy. We'll move on to Joel and Facility Services, Rob trailing along with him.
Good afternoon, Chairman Ullrich, members of the Board. Thank you again, Joel Swift, Deputy Director of Facility Services, and I have with me today Robin Holtz, our Capital Improvement Manager. Last meeting, we presented some discussion of the progress of the jail, so I won't go into that too much detail, but just a reminder, again, this is a design build project and the recommendation before the Board involves approval of a change order for security electronics that were anticipated in the design build process but not included in the original contract for McCarthy Construction. That change order number 17 is in the amount of $533,740 and to date, there have been 26 other change orders in this design build project to facilitate all those design revisions, totaling approximately $9,110,000. And this change order will bring the current contract to a total of $88,632,736. The security electronics component, obviously, in a jail is an important component to that facility and this change order includes the critical functions, including the door locks, the intercoms, the closed-circuit television, the monitoring, and all the programming that integrates all of those components. It captures all of those various additions, deletions, and revisions to that component that was originally anticipated and reflects all of those modifications necessary to deliver the complete security system for the jail. And in order to complete the acquisition installation, it is recommended that your Board approve this change order number 17 in the amount of $533,740. There is sufficient funding and as I mentioned, it was anticipated in the contingencies in the project, in the capital projects fund for this change order. Again, we're here to answer any questions your Board may have regarding this request.
If there are members having questions, the staff, in regard to the requested change order. Seeing none, any members of the public wish to address the Board on this? Bring it back for action.
Second.
Motion by Rockholm, second by Wiegand, in order to approve item 15A, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none? Thank you. And 15B?
Thank you. Again, Joel Swift, Deputy Director of Facilities, and I have Robin Holtz with me, our Capital Improvement Manager. This item is a general contracting method that is not specific to any given project right now and in a couple months back, we brought to your Board the request to approve the plans and specifications for job order contracting and we did bid that project and we received 35 trade contractor bids and, I'm sorry, excuse me, the plans were sent to 35 trade contractors, seven builders exchanges, and we received 11 bids on the job order contract. The apparent two responsive and responsible bidders were Riverview Construction from West Sacramento and Torres Construction from Los Angeles. And the way these contracts are defined is they're an indefinite quantity contract with a minimum contract value, which was set at $50,000 for each contract and the duration would be 12 months. The estimated maximum amount is $1 million and we put that in the bid documents really to set the bonding level for the contractors. Within the public contract code at your Board's approval, we could extend that up to the cap, which is up to roughly $4.1 million. It scales up each year, but, so right now, the obligation is $50,000 per contract. Should your Board approve these contracts, when the need for service arises, Facility Services will issue detailed scopes of works to each of those contractors. They will prepare a price proposal that's based on the tasks that they bid on, the quantities and the adjustment factors that they bid. Facility Services will evaluate the proposals in detail and if they're found to be reasonable and acceptable, a job order may be issued for the performance of the detailed scope of work. We recommend that your Board authorize the Director to execute the job orders up to $250,000 for approved funded projects and maintenance work. The Department will return to your Board for any authorization of job orders that were above that level. So in order to proceed, there's actually two actions. One is to award the bid to Riverview Construction in the amount of, in a amount not to exceed of $1 million and Torres Construction in the amount not to exceed of $1 million. And upon approval, County Council and Risk Management to authorize the Director of Facility Services to execute those contracts. And then the second component is to approve a resolution authorizing the Director of Facility Services or designated to execute job order contracts in amounts not to exceed of $250,000 upon review and approval by County Council and Risk Management and delegating that authority to approve any supplement orders consistent with the County- to approve any supplement orders consistent with the County Purchasing Manual and Section 20142 of the Public Contract Code. Again, this is sort of the last step of this, bringing this new delivery method to the table for the county of Placer. This would put in place our opportunity to use that contract we have in place, and we do have several potential small remodel renovation projects that this would match up with. So with that, if there's any questions from your board, certainly we'll be here to ask, answer.
Questions by board members. Supervisor Montgomery.
Yeah, I did have one question on this. You mentioned that this is an alternative delivery model, and it says the scope includes general construction, repair, remodel, other repetitive-related work to be performed under the management of the Department of Facility Services. Does this action displace any county employees currently employed by Facility Services?
No.
Thank you.
I'd be curious, whenever you think it's appropriate, six months, a year out, to get a report back as to how you think this is working.
Absolutely. Again, this is a 12-month contract from the time that it starts. We anticipate, assuming it's successful, to be returned to your board in about nine months, just to be looking at going out again to do this again. So somewhere in that timeframe, we certainly can come back and see how it's progressing. Absolutely.
Get an update, that'd be interesting. Okay, thank you. Any members of the public wish to address the board on this? Seeing none, it's a pleasure, the board. We have motion on items 15B, 1 and 2 by Supervisor Rock Holmes, second by Supervisor Weigant. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to Health and Human Services.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. I'm Ms. Lynn Tarrick, and I'm Assistant Director of the Adult System of Care Division of the Health and Human Services Department. I'm here today to request your approval of a renewal of a grant with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to receive funds for permanent supportive housing in the amount of $299,927 for a 12-month period. That 12-month period straddles, it starts December 1st of this year and seven months of this year and five months of next year. Those funds are used to support people who are homeless and mentally ill and disabled in providing permanent housing rental subsidies and support services such as employment and community resources to assist them to become more self-sufficient and less reliant on other county general fund dollars. The amount of general fund dollars required is less than 10%. $16,829 this fiscal year and next fiscal year, $12,107. Request your approval on this matter. Thank you.
Staff, or board members having any questions, staff? Seeing none, any members of the public wish to address the board on this item? Just a point of clarification, there's no budget revision required as a part of this. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Motion by Rock Holmes, second by Weigant, in order to approve item 16A. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item 16B.
Good morning, Chairman Euler, Board Members. Richard Knecht, Children's System of Care Director. This afternoon, Health and Human Services seeks your consideration and approval of the attached fiscal year 2010, 2011 Cooperative Agreement between the County Office of Education and the Children's System of Care in the amount of $3,672,261 to meet the historically shared mandated federal and state mental health requirements to serve SED children. This year's agreement reflects a reduced demand for these services, which is largely the outcome of recent efforts to build school-based prevention programs whereby many of these students are now receiving services earlier and at lesser cost. We want to acknowledge this year the persistence and commitment of our school district and PCU partners who have made funding available this year, notwithstanding significant fiscal actions at the state level. We would recommend your approval, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Okay. Questions by board members? Any member of the public wish to address the board on this item? All right, what's the pleasure of the board?
Approval.
Motion, the second, Rock Holmes and Weigant on item 16B. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. And moving on to C, please, yours as well.
Item C, for your consideration, the State Department of Mental Health block grant has since 1994 funded a variety of mental health services in Placer County for both adults and children. In the last full year of completion, more than 300 residents were assisted with housing and related support services, counseling, and case management services, which provide a level of independence, which helps to avoid hospitalization and other institutional care. This year's grant request is for $686,330, which is a slight increase from last year's allocation. There are no county general funds required, and we would urge your approval.
Questions by board members, members of the public? And a pleasure, the board.
Approval.
Let me give the motion to Holmes on that one, is it? What? No, C. So Holmes got the motion, and Weigant got the second on that one, on item 16C. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. Thank you. And item E, we've already taken D, so we'll move on to E.
Good afternoon, Chairman Euler, members of the board. I'm Cheryl Davis from your Human Services Division. Today, we're asking your approval of a contract with Intellige Corporation to take a private-sector customer-service business model and bring it into how we do business in human services. It's known as a service center. What we want to do is basically change the way we've done public assistance since the dawn of public assistance back in the 40s and model it after how private sector is managing the increased workloads that they're encountering in their everyday business. How we operate today is under a caseload model where we have one worker who can carry up to 600 families, and they're responsible for answering the phone if the family walks in, all the paperwork that comes in to deal with those cases. We want to take a task-based approach, that we will have staff answer the phone so that there's immediate response. Right now, we operate under, you know, we'll get back to you in two business days, and that often is not good enough for our families who are in need. We will handle our paperwork as a task-based approach, and we get about 1,000 pieces of paper a day, and then we have upwards of 500 folks coming through our lobbies every day. So we want to be able to segment that work out so that we can manage it better and have a timely response. The example I've been using as I talk to staff about this is much what we encounter on every given day. If you're calling your utility company or your cable company, you don't call and say, "Can I talk to my worker?" Whoever answers that phone helps you. And we believe that service should be for our families who are trying to feed their children or trying to get their prescriptions filled, that they don't have to wait for us to get back to them in two days. This is consistent with how Health and Human Services has been analyzing all of our operations over the past few years. It's an ongoing effort to make sure that we are finding better alternative ways to deliver our services that are more effective and efficient and actually make us very competitive with the business sector. We believe this is our way to invest in our staff by moving to a business service center that is kind of like an insourcing model that will allow us to manage the increased caseloads that we have and meet the needs of our community. Janine Berkland is here from Intellige, if you have any questions. Otherwise, with your approval today, we are anxious to get rolling with this business model, and we'll have our kickoff January 13th with your approval.
Great. Supervisor Weigant.
I just specifically request an update to see how things go with performance standard. Be very interested to see how satisfied we are in the story we can tell as a result.
There's a great management reporting tool that goes along with the model that we'll be rolling out, so we'll be able to give that feedback to you. We met with PPEO, who actually are very supportive of this approach, not only as a way to manage the workload, but improve our customer service also.
Great.
Supervisor Montgomery.
And again, just as I almost always ask on these things, this new model won't displace any existing employees?
No, it's a way for us to keep our employees, manage our workload, as I said earlier, insourcing so that we are competitive as we're rolling out healthcare reform and additional food services, food nutrition services, so that we can keep our jobs.
This is just the structure, then, not employees?
Correct.
Thank you.
Tom?
And if I might, Chair. Actually, that's part of the alternative service delivery model, that sometimes it's better to outsource, sometimes it's better to in-source, and sometimes we do things somewhere in between. And this is a great example of doing it a particular way that is an improved service model as well as providing bona fide opportunities for our current employees.
Correct.
Pleasure, sorry, before the board asks any more questions, any member of the public wish to address the board on this item? All right, what's the pleasure of the board? Motion by Rock Holmes, second by Supervisor Holmes, who approve item 16E. Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. Thank you.
Thank you. Happy holidays to you.
Thank you, Merry Christmas. And moving on to last but not least, public works.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the board. Glad to be here today in front of you. A monumental moment for us with this project. Item consists of asking for chairman authorization to award and execute contract number 1074 to Golden State Bridge Incorporated for construction of the Forest Hill Road Bridge Seismic Retrofit and Paint Project for just over $58 million. And just for the record, Peter Kratz, and here with Sherry Brexah, the project manager for the project. Quick background on the project, as you know, it's located east of Auburn, consisting of the fourth highest bridge in the country at over 700 feet above the American River. Major project elements consist of a variety of structural retrofit improvements, repainting the bridge, replacing the bridge pedestrian railing, sealing the bridge deck, and constructing a new catwalk system to facilitate future bridge inspections. Construction is expected to begin next spring and take approximately three years to complete this project. How we got here today, back in June of this year, in conjunction with the Department of Administrative Services, construction bids were solicited with a major advertisement and information effort that included two opportunities for prospective bidders to visit the project site and receive a detailed presentation from department staff and our engineer, Quincy Engineering. Five bids were received and opened on October 26th with the low responsive and responsible bidder determined to be Golden State Inc. out of the Bay Area, and a representative of Golden State is here today. A pre-award interview was conducted on November 5th to satisfy ourselves that the contractor appears qualified and able to complete this massive and complex project. All bidders were notified on that same day of the county's intent to award the construction contract to Golden State Bridge. The project has received appropriate environmental clearance and approvals through NEPA and CECL. Project funding is considered adequate as the low bid came in at over $10 million less than our engineers' estimate. The project is budgeted by a combination of secured federal and state funding sources identified in our current fiscal year budget and in subsequent fiscal year budgets. With our request today, we are only asking for a change order authorization of 5% of the bid amount based on the fiscal magnitude of this project. Should change orders exceed this authorization amount, we will obviously return to your board for additional authorization. Other steel bridge retrofit projects have fallen in the range of 20% contingency or more, and our typical contingency request is 10% for capital improvement projects. We want to respect having the board of supervisors be closely informed and in control of the project contingency, especially with such a large project, by requesting a smaller contingency today. So with that, we move that you approve this request as stated in the action request of the board memo, to be brief at this point, and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions of staff? Seeing no questions, any members of the public want to address the board on this item?
Good afternoon, Board. I'm Eric Peach, Auburn resident and a member of Protect American River Canyons. And the part of this contract that we would like you to pay particular attention to is the pedestrian railing part of the contract. As you know, the bridge soars over the American River, and there have been a number of unfortunate suicides. Close to 60 people have jumped from the bridge since its completion in the late 70s. It's also a safety hazard for those people that are recreating below the bridge and the river and the trails and the canyons. And I've been in contact with staff here. I actually went to the first contractor's bid meeting to see what the railing height was going to be like, and I've also shared emails with Peter and Sherry and with Ken on this. And I've done some research as well, too. The railing started out to be approximately eight feet in height, and recently that height was reduced to six and a half feet because Caltrans can't get their inspection equipment over that high of railing height. Well, there are a couple of things that you could consider here, we think. And one of them is that for a bridge of this importance and value, that Caltrans could perhaps add an extra two feet of arm to their inspection device to make it more amenable to a higher safety railing on our bridge. The other thing is that you could design the railing in such a way that it would make it more difficult for people to soar from the bridge or to dump trash. And I was recently down in San Francisco, and I took some pictures of a bridge railing that I thought was very aesthetically pleasing, but helped out in this area of safety. I'll be happy to pass this around to the board. It shows handsome railing with, you know, a balustrade uprights, but the unique feature about this is that they are curved at the top so that it makes it very difficult for people to climb over the top and also, from our perspective, to dump trash.
You submit that to the court, please. Submit to the court, please. And she'll pass it around, thank you.
So we would hope that the board would pay very close attention to this item on the contract, because we did start out with an eight-foot, over eight-foot railing, and it's already been reduced to six and a half. And we feel Protect American River Canyons, I've been in conversations with state parks, with Ranger Deichman, who I work closely with, that they were in hopes of this eight-foot structure. And it's easy to go cold in this situation when you hear like there have been, you know, over 50 suicides. But just to bring that home a little bit, my wife is a musician, and she recently played music for, at a celebration of life, for one of the young men who jumped from the bridge, and he was very young, his late teens, I think, early 20s, and he actually jumped while his father was there trying to console him. So this is, this is not something that we should take lightly. I think it's something that we should, as a community, address, and I know we're not going to totally stop this from happening, but anything that we can do to help people find the time to think about what they're about to do and to perhaps seek out more public assistance. And I would like to read to you just a paragraph from a letter that was recently published in the Auburn Journal from Connor Collins, a student at EV Kane High School, or, excuse me, Middle School here in Auburn. Second paragraph, "I believe that the forest hill bridge rail should be raised. It will keep people from jumping off and taking their lives for a mistake they might have made earlier." So I would hope that you will allow me to continue to work with staff here to see that we can't get the appropriate type of railing that will be both aesthetically pleasing but also the highest level of safety that we can provide for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments by members of the public on this item? Okay, we are on 17A, bringing it back to the board, what's your pleasure?
Approval.
Motion, Rock Holmes, second by Montgomery. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. And related items, 17B.
Yes, Chairman. Peter Kratz and Sherry Brexah, again, for the record, this item consists of asking for the chairman to approve and execute a professional services agreement with the Hana Group for construction management and other related services for the Forest Hill Road Bridge project for $6.89 million. As part of the project just awarded by your board, expertise to manage the construction of this project was obviously determined to be needed. Earlier this year, our department worked with the Department of Administrative Services to circulate a request for proposal for the needed work. Five firms submitted bids, and a prior resolution approved by your board authorized us to sign an initial contract with the highest-ranked firm, the Hana Group, for $200,000. This allowed them to assist us with constructability review and support us during the bidding stage of the project. The prior resolution allowed us to negotiate a larger contract with the consultant once construction was scheduled to proceed. The Department of Administrative Services supports the award of the contract proposed to your board today. The funding for these proposed consultant services is supported by a combination of secured federal and state funding identified in our current fiscal year budget and in subsequent fiscal year budgets. So request that you approve this item and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Board members have any questions? Any members of the public wish to address the board on this item? Seeing none, pleasure, the approval. All right, we have a motion, Rock Holmes, second, Montgomery, item 17B. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. I wonder who's going to make a motion on item once Rocky's gone? I don't think any of us remember how. Ken, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon Chairman, Board Members. My name is Ken Grimlin, Department of Public Works. This next item, we're requesting that a budget revision for our Tahoe area Regional Transit System, or TART, for $104,000 to fund other post-employee benefit contributions for two new employees to that division. In addition to that, we're also asking you to affirm our continued use of contract labor as we use those today to supply our peak service demands for bus drivers of that system. Your board has been reviewing some various services and service delivery. This is one other option for service delivery within TART. TART has used a wide range of alternatives for delivering our services. We use extra help drivers for temporary services. We actually have a private sector contract to provide drivers during certain seasons of our, our bus service. We use a contract to provide paratransit service, bus cleaning service, some of our snow removal services, a wide range of different services. Due to attrition, we've lost two bus drivers in the last year. We have an opportunity to review our delivery and that's what we want to talk about a little bit today. There are two basic models for transit delivery. One is a totally contracted-out service delivery option. We have the city of Roseville, the county of Yolo, the county of Sutter and Ubud combined together, as well as Washoe County, use that type of service delivery. Then there are others that use agency-employed employees. We have, in that grouping, we have Eldorado County, Nevada County, the city of Folsom. Two different, we're kind of a hybrid, a little bit in-between, although I consistently consider ourselves right now to be an agency-employed employees, if that makes sense. So before we talk about the analysis, I want to make sure we also understand, in Tahoe, there are some very special circumstances that we have to keep in mind as we're starting to analyze the different methods. One is our extreme peak season schedules. This shows how we have a 40 to 45% increase of service during the peak summer and the peak winter months. So a very up and down type of amount of service that we provide throughout the year. The blue shows the full-time drivers, the amount of shift hours they provide. The red or salmon color shows the amount of part-time permanent employees we utilize and then how we use extra help and contracts to supply those peak periods. In addition to that, we have the remoteness of Tahoe, very hard to recruit for people, not a lot of labor markets close by, Reno being the closest one. In addition, we have a relatively small-sized system compared to others and very widespread. Takes us a lot of times, we can take 20, 30 minutes just to get our bus from our site to actually where they're online in-service serving the public. And then finally, inclement weather, that is a factor we need to take, to take into account up there as we require additional services, making sure our buses are prepared to drive during inclement weather at all times, whether that's chains or whatever the case may be. So the first question we asked was, with these two, with these two vacancies we have, should we hire new employees or should we use our, our existing contract drivers and utilize that contract to supply these two additional drivers? What we found, if I can have that one, is that we currently have a contract to supply bus drivers in Tahoe, though that contract is for $43.26 per hour. So that's the green line on the far side. When we hire our own employees, they start as low as for temporary drivers, what we call the extra help drivers, at $19.27. For permanent bus drivers, it ranges from about $41 to $43 an hour. So through that, in fact, our average over our entire workforce for TART is $43.11 an hour. In all, you can, they're similar in cost. There's not one that's vastly different than the other. The second question we then asked is said, "Well, maybe that's because we're only hiring a few drivers. What happens if maybe we would take the entire operation and privatize that and get a contractor on board to do that?" And so we took a look at that. Maybe there's an economy of scale that's available there. We don't have a direct comparison of an agency that's much like us, but we do have some local people that do use private services, city of Roseville being the one most local to us, and so we're using their costs and trying to translate them to the Tahoe area to try to come up with a cost of what that would be. It's important to note, Roseville is much larger, twice as large as we are in terms of a transit system and, and they don't operate typically seven days a week, they're typically six days a week for most of their services. Tahoe is seven days. What we found through their costs is that there's two components. One is supplying the driver, where a private contractor supplies the driver, and the other is this fixed administrative cost to provide the supervision, the training, and everything else necessary to make that, that operation run. In Roseville, both of those are subcontracted out. What we did is took and assumed that we would need about 75% of the same administrative service that they need. We also assumed that we would pay the same price for a bus driver that they play and pay in West Placer. So we didn't account for any difference in the fact that Tahoe might be a little harder. What we came up with is that in both instances, the cost for providing the service was about $69 per what we call revenue service hour. That's the hour that someone's actually en route serving our customer. So again, what we're finding out, the costs are about similar. In general, what we found in the findings was that a private contractor pays the actual bus driver quite a bit less. There's a lot of money to be saved by supplying just the bus driver. But the private model currently is based on a very high turnover. You usually pay them less, they constantly have to have additional people and trainers on board to train new bus drivers to have them available to run the system. And so they have a much, a relatively higher fixed cost for administrative staff. At our current size in TART, relatively small, those balance out. The fact that there's, there's not as many, we, we currently in our model don't have as many administrative staff, but we pay our bus drivers more. And it just happens to be at this point in time in TART, those are about equal. So what we're proposing right now is that we do hire two new county-employed bus drivers as part of the TART system. From a cost standpoint, we believe they're about the same. There are some other factors that we took into account that we think are relevant. One is the possibility of contractor failure. When you do a contracted-out service and something doesn't work with that contractor, very difficult to be flexible in order to accommodate what needs to be done. A good example, or perhaps maybe a bad example, the South Shore of Tahoe right now, they've had, what, three contractors in the last four years, they're currently going through a bankruptcy, not a good situation in general. So we believe that's a factor that should be considered. In addition to that, because of, we think there's a safety and reliability enhancement by having less turnover, that less turnover means you have drivers who are more experienced dealing with the conditions in Tahoe en route more often. We believe that's a benefit, too. So again, what we're asking is to approve a budget revision for $104,000. That will help pay the one-time OPEB charge that we, that your board has set out as a policy for all new county employees and that will allow us to hire two new county-employed bus drivers. The funding for that will come from some actually one-time more, or should I say, more-than-anticipated revenues that we've had in TO, transient occupancy tax revenues for transit purposes, for state transit assistant revenues that we've received, as well as local transportation fund revenues that we received last year over what we thought we would have. And in addition to that, affirm the continued use of our contracted services because we believe that is an important component of our plan to provide the best, most cost-effective service. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions. Will Gardner, the manager of our transit system is here and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Tom, is there something you want to say?
Yeah, I just want to, again, touch upon, this is actually one of four items that you've had today that touch upon alternative service delivery. And on this one, especially appreciative of Will and Ken, they went through the steps of looking at the pros and cons of contracting out, the cost of contracting out there and you can see that it is, for service delivery, it is a better model, we believe, even paying the OPEB cost to utilize county employees up in that area. It's based upon a deep analysis that they work with Allison Carlos on this. But to getting back to the, I think, the bigger policy issue for your board is that every time we're looking at these things, whether it's clinic costs, whether it's bus drivers, there's this comparative analysis going on of what's the best way to deliver the service in the most cost-effective way and also recognize our employees have an interest and we are, they're part of our folks and we're trying to do justice by them by coming up with the best method as coming out with these answers. And so that you've had four items today that have touched upon that alternative delivery of services in various ways and this is one that is most directly comparative and I think it gives you a well-thought-out answer of what is the best solution here.
Are there questions or comments by board members? I'm assuming the, the hourly cost that we're seeing at the various steps is a full burden cost that reflects all payroll costs, benefits, everything? That's our?
Absolutely. In fact, it also includes the new OPEB cost, not just the ongoing payroll tax portion of that, but the one-time cost annualized, what we did is over 10 years, which is the vesting term for that benefit. So that is included in those numbers.
That's roughly $2.50 an hour that's added in on top of that?
Just for the one-time costs, it's a little over $2.
So that is included in there and you did go over the 10-year vesting?
Absolutely.
That was exactly, you anticipated my question beautifully. Other comments or questions by board members? None, any member of the public wish to address the board on this item? And seeing none, we'll bring it back. And Jennifer, there are no county workers being displaced as a result of this. All right, we have a motion, Rock Holmes. Sorry, I need a lunch. Second, Montgomery, for item 17C. All in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed, none, thank you.
It's a roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry, it is a roll call because it is a budget revision and so we will go ahead and call the roll. Rock Holmes?
Yes.
Wygant?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Euler?
Still aye.
All right, and County Council will now let us know what we're going to do next.
Yes, we have two pieces of litigation for item 18, Derek Schumot versus the county et al. and a heard action filed by the DSA. The previously listed real property matter has disappeared.
In DSA, if you may.
I mentioned DSA.
All right, we will come back when we're done with closed session to report out. Thank you very much.